All right. We'll begin with the chamber report, Troy.
Hello and good evening. Just doing a sound check. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, mastered being able to turn my mute button off. It only took me three years, so. I'm gonna share screen. Hopefully I can do that. There we go. Okay. I'll see that. Okay?
That's good.
Okay, all right, I'll. Hit it then. We are in February, which means love from Leavenworth. And hopefully you notice the the hearts that we added to the big Christmas tree on the corner to celebrate the month of February. We have a couple different promotions that are running. We have a love from Leavenworth advent calendar that about 5,000 people are participating in every day. And every day we are. People can enter and win prizes. Something else that we're doing in the month of February is we purchased a bunch of hearts from Boulder Ben Glassworks. And if you shop on Thursdays, there's a little contest that you can potentially win a heart and win a heart in Leavenworth. And we purchased 150 of those for the month and distributed those through the through some of the Chamber members downtown. That is something that's also going on for the month of February as well. I wanted to share this final pedestrian count number from January. We did end up with that that really cold snap on MLK weekend, as you can see, indicated by the gray. We had a bit of a decline on that weekend. Every other weekend was either up or on par with the previous previous year, so a little bit of a hit on that. I was working on some 2023 charts and and things for my annual report. This was something I put together. I thought I would throw up and share. And these are the top 25 days since we started recording pedestrian counts on on Front Street and these. So that was July of 2021. 14 of the 25 days are in 2023. So they just made the list recently, and not one of them are in July and August. All 25 days, whether they're in 21, 22, or 23 are October, November, or December dates. I had a great conversation today with a gentleman from Helen, Georgia. If you guys are familiar with this little town, Bavarian Village as well. And a lot of similarities between them and us. And they had reached out. Carl, you may be getting a call from them, maybe Selby as well, and to talk about stuff. They have no agenda other than just trying to share information. They have a sister city in Germany that they do stuff annually. So it'd be great to learn more about that from them. But just kind of sharing ideas and and things like that. So a great discussion with them and always can learn more. And if if they've got something that we need and they, you know, vice versa, it'd be great to share ideas, things like that. I just fired off my fourth quarter invoice to Chantal, and that included my reporting for 2023. This is how the lodging tax from I received from the city was spent. Fifty-one percent went to festival expenses, 37% to wages and personnel for all of the people we hire to work at the visitor center, put up lights, work at Oktoberfest, that kind of thing. And then 9% to visitor center operations, keeping the lights on over there and open 362 days of the year. And then 3% to our ambassador program. And as you as those on the council from last year, when we just did the the recent negotiation, we got a bump. Thank you again for that. It has really helped. And one of those reasons it has really helped is because this is a chart showing the collections of the city and the county since 2001. And you can see that at end of 2020, when the STR legislation went into effect countywide and that went into effect in 2021, which was actually a record year at $3.18 million in revenue collected by the county. And since then, it's had attrition. Maybe some good reasons in there for the attrition. For me, as a director of the chamber, is the bad thing because since 2021, I have lost $250,000 in revenue from the county. And and so the increase I got from the city was immediately canceled out by the the attrition in STRs from the county. And I do perceive that 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 trend will continue to where I think the the city of Leavenworth just did 4.1 million in revenue on lodging tax somewhere in that neighborhood for 2023. The county, I think next year is going to be under 2 million. So city of Leavenworth double what the county is doing now. Was trending quite quite the same. And the reason why I say is the attrition is so much of our area is over the amount. So it's not like when one STR closes, a new one can open. There'll be continued to be losses until they get to that that level where they can start adding them again. And my fourth quarter check from the county was $50,000 less than the fourth quarter check from the previous year. So when we were setting records in the fourth quarter, the county was having yet a worse year than it's had the two previous quarters. So just a heads up on that, not the fund that it was once, and the growth is experiences has been sort of hobbled. And that is the end of my report. Should you have any questions, I'd be happy to fill those now.
Anybody have any questions? You have anything to add there, Mr.?
One quick question about Helen and Troy. Troy didn't let me know that Helen, Eric.
Yeah.
Reached out just, they consider themselves Bavarian or German? Because you said Bavarian in your statement, but I always said there's maybe a German town. Is it, do they make it station like we do?
Not too much. I I think it is pretty specific because one of their codes is they all have to have red tiled roofs. Some of the similarities then being they're, you know, an hour and a half from Atlanta. They're in what they they call mountains. And we call foothills. But they're, you know, in a recreation area. They're on a floating, you know, they float on the river. You know, they've got, they've got other things going on. So they're really good, but they're a lot smaller, too. They're only 500 is their population versus our 2200-ish. And one thing I asked them, hey, did you guys, you know, close your downtown? And they're like, oh, we wish, we wish our highway goes right through it. So we wish we were set off. I'm like, ah, thanks whoever did that in the past of putting our, not running the highway too through the main street, so.
I noticed their 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 image was with captive construction, which according to our Bavarian code, if you didn't notice, you probably didn't, is illegal. So we have some captive construction from the old days, but our new code does not allow that. That's more of a northern Germany feature. So yeah, the red roof is also we want the northern zone. So I think they're a German town versus Bavarian.
Look up, can you call them a Bavarian Alpine town?
They say Bavarian Alpine?
Their tagline is the charm of Bavaria and the heart of the Blue Ridge Mountains.
They're also what I call an end-to-end town like we are. It's Bavarian end-to-end. It's not just the core downtown. It's, you know, it's the McDonald's. It's the fast food. It's a safe way. So it's and they're, they're just like us in that way that their code extends throughout town for for the for the theme.
Great. Any other questions?
I have one more last thought. Troy, the date for our chamber banquet at the Enzian? If folks that are locked down, there's a sitting table available for those details, you try. Now the information's coming out soon.
Yeah, we will have tickets going on sale in the first of March, March 1st, and the it will be the last Thursday of the month of 28 of March. 28th of March, Chamber Banquet at the Enzian. Tickets go on sale March 1st.
Right. Let's see if your vehicle, if someone's that.
Great. That's it. All right. Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy. You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
All right. Next is Shawan County. They're Bavarian substation and water connection request. Who's kicking that off? Is that you, Andy?
It is. Yeah, I'm happy to give a quick update on that or a quick intro, I should say. So this time is for the PUD staff to discuss a future water connection request that they have for their Bavarian substation. And I did just want to give the reminder, this is just a discussion. Any resulting action would be taken at a later time. And I can't see who is there in person. I'm struggling with the owl a little bit. I do see that Becky Jaspers is on the call. I don't know if there's anyone there in person from the PUD as well.
No, we have some.
Awesome. Well, I'll hand it over to them to give their presentation. And then I'm happy to give a like a staff regroup at the end of their presentation as well.
Do you have the PowerPoint?
Oh, I do, sir.
Can I just sit right here?
I've got a podium.
All right, can I just walk up there, talk to it? So what?
Yeah.
Or talk to back there?
No, we'll get that up. We'll get that up for you.
Well, I'm Gary Rice, I'm a project manager at Shawan PUD. I actually had a hand in helping select the site, select the sites that we're planning on building a substation on about five years ago. And what we're here for today is to request to get city water to our substation site and then also to the lot just forward to the north of us, the Randier Farm. And the reason that is, is the parcel, the two parcels along to most substation parcel, Randier Farm, certified by a single well is in the location where the substation is intended to be placed. So these are wells. So we've done some investigation on whether we can build another well and what our different options are. And we believe that getting city water is our best option. So I'm gonna go through a series here of the same map and just keep on adding that map to the story. So first of all, we have the city map, and then the demonstration needs alternative solutions and request for clarification. So the first one here is just to get everyone oriented. And what we've done is we've put together a map that shows the city of Leavenworth property down in the lower corner just past Meadows Development is actually an urban growth area. And the rest of it is actually on the county, Shawan County. The two lots that we're talking about, I outlined in white there, Lot 1, which is Randier Farm, and Lot 2, which is the PUD parcel. PUD parcel is 3.01 acres in size. Next. What I wanted to show here was some of the constraints that we have. The the blue outline you see at the bottom, the the circle there, that originates on a well at the center and strikes a hundred-foot radius. So that's a you can't be within septic system if you're within that 100 feet. There's also a provision in the shared well maintenance agreement, there's sanitary provision, but we can't have any potential usage within that hundred-foot radius also, well. So the two yellow circles that I showed there, those are actually the septic systems for both residents, the residents for Lot 1 and residents for Lot 2. And the septic systems now the size of the septic system, but also a reserve area. When you put those two together, I've got here, as I've measured it from the south, the southernmost edge. So what I'm building on is a demonstration that we don't have move on lot number two to be able to replace it, replace a well. So those yellow circles you look at there, those are no build areas due to septic. Next one. The light blue that I show, so there is a defense perimeter of the substations we have laid out. So you can see that the blue well area is within the substation footprint, which we can't have the well within the substation footprint. The rest of Lot 2, it's fairly dedicated, and that's actually steeper going off to the east that goes down to the Chumstead Creek. So it's a steeper area, area, but you wouldn't be able to put well in also. So on the next slide, which is the top, is I will take the the two yellow circles there that represent the southern edge, that you ship, they, you saw they ship outward. So now that's also the 100-foot no build zone due to septic. Yeah, that line, I wanted to make sure I mean, on here, that when you draw these no build circles or isolation areas, you usually can go into the ground directly, but you don't go into the property that's adjacent on the other side. So each one of those stops that either be Meadows property or the project Baron property there. And then the yellow dotted line is actually as close as you can put a well to the road. So I play around a little bit with that light blue potential well. If we try to put one there. But then, when I take a look at the well, well agreement that we have, the well agreement says that we can't be within the area of a barn, barn, or vehicle structure, or pasture, things like that. You have to be isolated. So as I live on Lot 1, or a place to put a well, we really just come up short there also. So that's kind of our dilemma. We could possibly put a well on Lot 1 if we were ready to get the Randier Farm to not use part of the property, break the bulk of purposes that they already are. We had a really emotional about that. Is they ended you know, their parcel, I mean, we're basically in a position where we need to put the well because of our abuse. And then we'd be asking them to change their use so that we can come available on their property. So not to say that that couldn't be done, it's not possible to be a watered city. So I, next slide. And but I've shown here, the little blue ellipse, light blue ellipse, that's kind of the connection area that I had without any of the city utilities, without having any information from the metal development. But we now have more information on that, on the border series, I thought, with marriage to the chair. He took a look at that area and says there might be different connection points. But in any case, he knew we had a connection point, and he could bring the waterway along some stick highway and then cross the board with your city engineers on that, if it was allowed to go ahead and get city water for Lot 1, 2. What I'm asking, the most, so really put our ask for consideration is, is that the city provide domestic water service to Lot 1 and 2, which are in the county. And allow us to which would allow us then to build our Bavarian substation. And then coordinate designs with the city, considering this really is this portion of 2024. Could talk a little bit to the need of the substation. Everyone knows we've been needing some substation for some time. During that cold snap, someone asked earlier, I think we were at 117% on Leavenworth 1, transform, and like 95% on the 2. Now it's it's bad, but you can't run transformers over nameplate, especially when it's cold. Is there, when it's cold out, they can raid and run more. So you're, you're running more than the nameplate. And what we have is a mobile substation based, transform doesn't go out, and we do something, we can bring in a mobile substation. And the mobile substation will only do 100%. You really can't ramp them because of the type of cooling system they have on. So every time we do go over nameplate, we may not have a failure, but if we did, we might come up short out, so we can do something else. So anyways, so any questions I can ask on the water components?
I'm curious, but you like the electrical side of it. Can you explain that one more time? So this will benefit the city, right?
Yeah.
In a way, like I said, when power goes out, it will help a percentage of those people get back. It will, it will benefit the city, right?
Well, it'll allow growth to continue and go back and solve the overload problem that we have right now. If you're looking like the city of Wenatchee, it's a dense enough population that you have several substations. So if something happens to one of them, you can move that load around distribution lines. Here in Leavenworth, we have two substations. They happen to be at the same place, so we really call them one substation. But we have Lot 1, Lot 1, and Lot 2, and they're in the same yard, two different transformers. And each transformer can service in four different directions, four different lines, say that they have a 500 houses a piece. But all you have is one location inlet board that by a single pole line comes in and power can go out in eight different directions. And I think they're so congested back there, at least they only have six or seven different directions. They physically can't get the distribution out. But it has to be built with overloading itself. So currently we're overloaded. But the new substation will do is is built for future expansion. So right now, we're gonna put in one transformer, which will have four different services that will go out. I think they got a plan, one for North Road, one across up to Titus, one up the Chumstead, and one back into town. And that will be redundancy into the system. So immediately, you'll take, you know, the coal state of the year, 117%, 95%. Now you're adding zero electricity damage to us. And now we just brought down these, we'll take it down to say 70%. And you're, and you've got some flexibility. And then the next step is to upgrade Lot 1, 1. That's something that sets a high priority.
So that's, yeah, so that was my next question is, so this is a great, this is, the timing is right. This is a great solution in addition to the two that we currently have, right? This is in addition to. But will at some point it take the place of one of them as we?
No, it won't take the place of one. We'll rebuild both of the ones that we have and bring those both up to our standards.
Okay.
28 MVA transformers, you have two. So the area will now have three. We're separating the the power source coming in the leftwards. Right now, it comes in on one pole line, but it's actually coming from two different directions. It's on one pole line once you get to the train station. And we're going to get the other side of our railroads for our railroad property we have there. And we're gonna split that line, and then we're directed to this little substation to that we can operate. So now we're gonna have a loop running through a transmission unit, so we can feed in different directions. So it's just gonna give it a kind of that ability, which we didn't have up there and now.
Great.
Sounds great.
I had a couple of questions. So you're figuring out accessing the city water, remember where that little oval was? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, the plans that I had at the time, it was for the trail expansion, shows that's where the water is.
Right.
Larry has been talking with the designers of Meadows, and I believe you just got information that they made the other tiny location, they're putting their own junk stick highway still on their property. So we'll just work with if city engineer, if you're sitting in there, be off the test, wait to talk about it. You're well involved at under road, farm, and cost, such in that way.
Good. Yeah, somewhere. And then it's gonna run up on the other side as far as supplying the reindeer farm and?
Yeah, I
We don't know yet.
The actual, no, you know, the connection point right now, you saw those two orange circles. You haven't missed those, but just the north side of those. And there's a connection point to the house. The water right now says the house on PUD property was the original home there. The water goes into that home, out that home, the next home. It doesn't actually, so we'll improve that. We'll actually go out to a to a block out to the side and split the water. There'll be two water services is what we're asking for.
Okay. What's been the response from the property owners on this? Have you had any conversations with them?
Yeah, we just have the the one property, other than Randier Farm, and they're receptive to it.
Okay. Who's paying for this?
I if nothing else, the PUD will pay for it. But we'll see if there's a little bit of a sharing benefit with Randier Farm as well.
But the city is not paying for any of this. Whatever happens out there with the wells and the hooking up to the city water and everything, city has?
PUD will take the lead on paying for design to hook up with the city's system and all the construction. But this city will get those two little water connections, and PUD will pay for the infrastructure given there.
That the PUD is paying for. So we pay nothing.
No.
We just get two more.
You're allowing us to do this, which is up themselves.
Is it possible that on those properties, there will be more houses built? Or is it just where it is?
I I looked at your requirements on the municipal code, and it actually provided this building additional property to be on what's allowed. So you wouldn't see a subdivision per se.
Okay.
I do think that the county allows like a, an accessory dwelling unit on every property. I don't know what the city municipal code has in there, including that, but we might not call it the letter, whatever the is in the code.
And as far as you keep mentioning, or you mentioned a couple of times, the project Baron property?
That's a cross.
Yes. So we're not involved with that. You're just mentioning it.
What I was trying to show there was that that was within the urban growth boundary. It's always an urban growth boundary, it goes beyond the city. That's usually supposed to be annexed next day to the city at some point in the future. So the project Baron property is within that urban growth boundary, and in fact, the orchard above project Baron.
The Pilkington orchards. That Pilkington up there? Okay, I still not hearing a connection with Project Baron as far as this 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 thing is going. They're not involved. Is that true?
They're not involved. No.
Okay, no, this is. If they wanted to be involved, then that would be them applying to get water rights and blah blah blah.
Yeah, we're just looking at that lot 1 and PUD's in the county.
And you know, it's funny, five years ago or six years ago, when this all started with this new building, it seemed like everybody was in a panic and it had to be done right away. And here we are five years later, and nothing's been done.
I don't know if you're first on cultural.
Pardon me?
I guess I said, fine, we've done a cultural, cold site, such in both of our maps. At cultural.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what slowed it down.
Put a two-year debt in it so far. It's worth a market, put a two and a half year debt in it.
And so the advantage to the city is?
Power in the future?
With the, okay.
The substation, yeah, the substation is, is to address the power needs of the city.
I think the biggest thing for the council to consider is that we allow three of these a year, Matt. And this would take two of them. Two hookups, ERUs.
Three of these.
Outside, outside our urban growth area, emergency declaration, essentially, we fire, and that's what he's trying to show. That's, they don't have a viable place to put a well on that site. So that, that qualifies for that emergency, but we only allow three of those per calendar year.
Three hookups or?
Three ERUs, they call it, equivalency unit, yeah.
In the city of Leavenworth?
No.
Outside.
I mean, you focused on Leavenworth, obviously.
Yeah.
Providing for Leavenworth. So to consider outside is, has to be an emergency, and then we limit it to three, so.
Yeah.
Whoever's going for this each year, last year, how many of you last year? How many are you for? I mean, if we use two now, do you use this every five years or?
Every year.
Just the reason two of the first month of the year.
Right.
Right. It's every year, it's a maximum of three, but they have, I don't, I don't know if we've always hit that three or I know we get requests that we don't accept because we're not convinced it was an emergency request.
I see. Oh, you stopped me off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I would love to jump in here if you don't mind really quickly. I did want to provide a little bit of a staff recommendation here as well. So Tom and I discussed this earlier today, and he's not able to be here in person for the, for the study session. So I'm happy to present on our behalf from both Tom and I. But ultimately, what we're looking at is this lot two, where the substation is proposed. We would recommend that there is a connection for the substation. But we do have some concern with, I believe it's Lot 1. That's currently the reindeer farm. And our concern stems from the fact that the Leavenworth Municipal Code only allows for one one residential unit to be served. So section 14.14.100 point I one or I six says, a water connection shall not be allowed to split into two or more. The lateral line shall serve a single structure. And the reindeer farm has multiple existing structures on it currently. And so you know, as we all know, we're not taking action at this time, but we do think that Lot 1, that the reindeer farm is on, warrants further evaluation before we determine that we even can connect them per our code.
Excellent questions.
Yep.
Um, on the P.
Um, on the P D parcel right now, is that residence in use or is it no longer in residential use?
Yeah, we have rented out uh between the neighbor.
Okay. Oh, to the reindeer farm? They're using it?
Well, I should say reindeer farm, I. I forgot her name, the daughter of her once reindeer farm, or her accident there.
Okay.
Although I might mention that we uh have been having issues with the uh structure itself. Needs built nineteen oh five, and the repairs would be having so many that uh when we initiate destruction. We had a half a half vacated. Also just more to put a reindeer ground and that sort of things. I could have a bunch of. Relieve her as much as you can, I guess, as to the area.
Can you explain a little bit as to? Uh why the existing wellhead cannot be within the footprint of your substation footprint?
Uh because of electrical faults might have. Now you put in a grounding system in the substation and. Even if everything's grounded, if you're, you're standing somewhere, it's not on the ground map. Uh within the area, we ground everything, even the outside of the fence and everything's grounded. Um because the water line would continue on through and water itself is a conductor. So it would continue on through. We would have a ground map on that. Waterline vector. So yeah. The danger situation, well, this was a fault.
And is there, is there a proximity requirement for? For something like that, like say, if the well could be moved to the south near the property corner and still meet the radius requirements with the help district. Would that be a possibility or is there a proximity requirement that would negate that option?
No, if, if we, the final location, you know, that works with the, you know, the setbacks and the area then sit. Uh then we can pump the radius to give the water there.
Okay.
Two residents.
Are you saying it can be moved south?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if it can be. I mean, from the, from the site plan that you provided, it looked like maybe. To the south of the footprint of your substation might be a possibility because it's still on your property.
Yeah, um if you take a look at the. It was slide number four.
I don't think it's got the.
Yeah, these are accurate from their distance, right?
I didn't bring our design with this, but uh. Because we paid portions of the substation site, the approaches pathway, or the whole substation through the, through, we paid that also. Uh we do a uh. A runoff analysis, and then we have to do stormwater control to beat up one side. Yeah, well, that's more.
Just don't go backwards. But, hold on.
Forward.
Keep tapping.
Sure. Uh we did stormwater drainage on our design and we have a drainage ditch that's on beauty property. Adjacent to Chum State Highway. Uh we're draining. This outside the substation area, the north side of the substation area. And then it drains down and we have to have that uh containment basin. Down in this area on our property itself.
Okay.
So we have a stormwater retention basin there. The boat will come in here, like the, the exit is down to Chum State Beach. So everything uh either to the west or to the south is uh. It's in that drainage area, stormwater retention area.
Questions?
I, kind of to echo what Andy had said, um I, I have some concerns about. Having lot one connected to city water in that. There's a lot of non-residential uses happening on that site. Um and. It would be interesting to know what other potential water rights that they have on that property that they're using. Um for the reindeer farm, for agriculture uses, those sorts of things, um to see how we'd be able to kind of. Delve tail together with those existing water uses, if that's a possibility or not. Otherwise, it could be a high water user um outside the city elements.
Yeah, I might add that uh for that property is divided into two parcels. They built one well and one well that serves both parcels. There is a second well there. So it'll be different this time. We're not asking for one connection, like Ciborac, asking to separate those connections.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. It would actually be two city connections.
Is it possible you could, would it function as one connection at all? That's, okay.
Nope, that's not allowable in our code.
What's that, Andy? Oh, that's, that's the code?
Yeah, I said that's not allowable per our code. And we don't, um we don't have any flexibility in that, the way it's written either.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if there's any room to move on that.
I did, I did read through the code and uh. To, it looked to me like it was just for the residential purposes, because all that would be for, how. How, how much can you keep that house on some residential water bed from permitting standpoint, they shouldn't be able to, you know, build. You know, locations that need to have water.
I'm speaking about, I speak this with them. On this, sure. Yeah, I'm. We probably, I was on the community to help locate the site. There's a, there's a desperate need to probably, in fact, there's concerns of ten delay. But Shalane took the water right over. There was a lot of pushback. People didn't want transmission, keep lines through town. Because technically it's sort of better for the spread out for the street layers on. So this was the property required, meet our needs. And obviously with the overload and stuff, that need has not gone away. P U D, if they, if you don't, if you're inside, uh they probably look another four year delay or something. City tolerated, but that's, that's.
Uh thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in that the reindeer farm in the past has asked about being inside the U G A. For potential future annexation. So as we're looking at our urban growth area boundary, that might be something to consider as well. I also know from our pre-application meetings with the Shalane County P U D. That our power supply is in need of the substation in order for us to continue to grow. And meet the needs of the community in addition to just having some redundancy and other alternatives. So. Um it is a need to have the power station. There is a potential maybe to consider changing the urban growth area boundary. Bringing this in, having it appropriately zoned as uh. The commercial use for the. Reindeer farm and industrial use is right across the street for the P U D station. So that might make sense there. Um so those are additional options to consider.
I'll make one more comment on that. The, with that substation there, the transmission lines are over there. But the distribution line will now be underground from there up to Titus and into the town. So. That location served to. To, to reduce the adverse impact of major lines through town. That's one of the real advantages towards uh.
Has, has the underground improved? I'm trying to remember back Elmer. And wasn't there, the P U D didn't want to go underground, they wanted to go above because repairing was so hard if it was on.
Yeah, what you're remembering is the transmission, the high pitch, hundred fifty maybe. The tall lines that all have a few wires on them, uh those, you know, would have to go underground those. So yeah, the transmission lines have to stay above, but a lot of the lines around town, around the edges of town, especially of the Chum State Valley. The distribution lines are on overhead lines. Now, distribution, especially if it's in a city here in a residential area. We built match existing, you know, and, and the backside of uh Battle Snake Hill there to tie this down, go underground. The distribution.
Yeah, it sounds like the biggest question mark is that reindeer farm and. Whether that gets included and how that would be included and depending on future plans and all of those things, it sounds like that's the. The thing we need to investigate a little more, but it doesn't sound like, I don't hear anybody saying that we don't need this. P U D of substation, so.
No.
It's obviously needed, that's right.
Yeah.
So that's not the, the critical piece. The critical piece is how we. And can we justify doing the reindeer?
Yeah, well, they're, they're kind of both together too, because we take our well out at its surface, you know. We would take the well out, though, though they, I don't know.
Was it, was it ever discussed the possibility of drilling a new well on that southern? Portion of the property and potentially looking to relocate your stormwater pond? Is that feasible at all or was that discussed at all?
There's not another place to put this stormwater pond. You know, there's also the, the runoff that comes off of uh Battle Snake Hill that, uh irrigation. Whether it's irrigation or, or spray water that runs constantly. That's right adjacent to it also, basically right on the uh, the city's right of way or the county's right of way. That's the path of that drainage ditch, that stormwater is just in between our fence and that ditch. So. Uh but it seemed to be a fairly large site, but the type of car will, the malaria is out of it, it's not that big.
Did you say that you could get started as early as the first quarter of this year?
For design. Yeah, but I was talking about not building a substation, but putting a design together and not completely everything for the water.
No questions? We'll have this come up again, but we appreciate getting this is. Getting us started with what, what those questions are and yeah. Sure, we'll afford somehow to work with you to get it.
Okay.
Is there other clarifications that you wanted to make or?
Um, well, I. I have talked to the management. We did, the city did provide drawings, so.
Right.
Uh and, and I understand drawings are still available. But we kind of saw the concept, but to it, so you guys have thoughts about it. Get water to the site.
Okay.
Yeah, um I had a question. Project Bay Bear?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the mend project?
No, that's a separate piece. It's just to the north or west or whatever that is.
It's, it's north and uh west of the reindeer farm, the end side of the highway. Okay.
When you say mend project, I'm not aware of a mend project.
Well, it was the mend.
Oh, metal yard.
Metal yard.
Oh, okay.
Now form a metal yard property.
Yeah. Now it's a whitener park. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First.
Thank you.
All right, next up, going to switch to manufacturing compost. We're going to add some exciting stuff here, huh?
Always exciting. Um so first of all, my name is Halera, I'm sales manager of a lot of things up at Wynton. And I want to thank you city council members for inviting uh me to speak on the Apple Monday. As well as the mayor and city staff that's here and online. Um so thank you guys for, for giving us this platform. So a lot, not a lot of me, but some of you are new and don't have the history for um Wynton. So Wynton was conceived in twenty twenty as a composting facility. When we purchased the old mill plate, and I'll go through this fully quick because it's just the background, what it really about. But so we established a site, it's taken us two years um to do the permit. And so then in twenty twenty-two. The city of Leavenworth started hauling yard waste to our facility. Since then, we started a couple of different programs, and we have a community compost program and a very commercial network, so we see commercials. So kind of that's our background, that's where we are. And so some of the things, the feedback I got in as we've launched the community composting program. And I've been down at recycling center and different education events I've done is. Whether, when people, residences may see a curb side program like you see in other arts and martial states. And I think the biggest reason this vast is the ease it does, it allows for those people to participate. Currently, all of the yard waste in the city of Leavenworth is within the apple night at quarantine zone. And so in order to manage that, and with Wynton established where it is to be able to, to manage the apple night at quarantine zone. The Leavenworth launched a couple of different programs. You guys have a spring and a fall cleanup for your yard waste. And then you have a recycling center that captures your yard waste for people to drop off. Uh so in order to make that easier, we can adopt some programs. Or what I'm really asking the city to look at is if they'd like to move forward with a curb side. So I'm going to rese, I didn't bring any fancy slides to get to just watch me, but I'm going to refer back to my notes so that I can make sure I catch them. Um, the community compost apparently talks about between adding six dollars and it's a five, it's a five gallon bucket program. And within Leavenworth, we have a hundred and forty-four participants that are using the free drop off stations that are. We have other people within this program that reside outside of Leavenworth and they have other drop off locations. So they're not really using. Um. At the last city engagement night, we asked the community, if they, if they had a shirt on, our, our table. We asked them if they would like to participate in needle program or yard waste program. Um the sixty-three people that came up to us, fifty percent of them said they would and they all reside in the city of Leavenworth. Twenty percent were from outside the city of Leavenworth and wanted to participate in a curb side program. And ten percent said they either already composted or they weren't happy with the community composting program. Um, and then twenty percent were either not asked or indifferent to whether they would like to. Um. So currently, the city of Leavenworth captures yard waste and recycling center during their spring and fall events. Um, in the last two years, yard waste that's been tipped at Wynton is about a hundred tons a year. Which constantly be three, seven and eight thousand just for tippy, not including. So the city of Leavenworth generally falls from. The Leavenworth Recycling Center to Wynton, or in some cases, we all pour the city of Leavenworth. So I kind of went for a walk before I came in here and kind of visualized what I would see. So what it would be looking at is. Would residents like to participate if given the choice? Um the city would be able to determine the rates. In other areas, like East Penatchee, March, Penatchee, there is already a curb side yard waste pickup. And those rates range between twelve dollar or thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents and thirteen dollars and seventy-five. Those really up to the city of what that rating looks like for residents. As a partner, Wynton would like to offer this um service to the residents. Waste management, your current caller does not want to, or when given the chance, didn't elect to do yard. Because they didn't have facilities in tip to, because of the apple magnet one. So Wynton would love to partner with the city to offer this kind of service. And it can look different. And some of the options can just be for yard waste. You could have an option for curb side food and yard waste, cleaning the waste, which would be um. Have, have a various container, because everything we've launched in the city of Leavenworth so far has been fair wise and we would continue that program. Um and then a third option would be to do food waste only. And this would kind of apply to people that multi-family. Hosted for apartments and would allow us to plan for them. Um we could also look at, there's no change in just what it costs the city now, since offsetting that cost to resident. On a lot basis. Um I did it for then very long, so I, I wanted to open it up first, since it's kind of a new concept. But what it would be is a card at home that a resident can have for the yard or the food waste or whatever, maybe that's determined over the time. So with that, I'd like to thank you guys. And if you want to discuss further, I have a question.
What's the standard size container that would be at a residence if that program was within the residential districts?
So it depends on the program, I think we have. If it's a curb side program with food waste included, begin the smallest can that the manufacturer would like to use has a distinct four gallon.
Okay.
Most residents collect about five gallons of compostable food waste a week. Of course, when you look at, if you look at your data for your tonnage times for your recycling center and kind of determine. and kind of determine basically all of that recyclers and our yard waste we've gone with as well, but that's also seasonal. So we have three months out of the year where we don't use it for any yard waste, and it was just food waste. So I think the city could look at it in different ways, but it could have different different types of containers and elected as you guys wanted it to be from that resident.
That's a big container, but I can see how in my neighborhood, specifically one of us could sign up for it and lots of neighbors could go in together and use the container. So.
How big is it? Is it sort of like the podium that you're that that you're leaning on right now?
Yeah.
I think it's the same size as the city's green hand.
It's just your typical ninety six.
Oh, okay.
And then a sixty, I think the city of Elevenworth and waste management know that the ninety six, sixty four and thirty six.
Yep.
Thirty.
But then nobody makes a bear that's thirty six, so they can't put that small. Yeah. But it's fairly large, but I think we have the ability to adapt the program with the city's help of what residents would like. Would they like? After, I think. What would the cost be different? Would it be just food waste? Would it just be yard waste? You know, I think if you open up and then we could contract and it would really be contained by the city. But we'd love to pick up your.
I love the commingled idea. Pretty awesome to be able to pick your yard waste and your food waste and everything.
Curb side pickup idea.
And I think a lot more people will participate. I'm, I think we're pretty lucky to have the hundred and forty four that did participate already, and they are physically going somewhere to drop it off instead of just purchase coming up from their door.
I'm curious about about that, two things. Um, I use, I live right down the street. I use a recycling center, one thousand centers. I don't, do you know that I come in and do my yard waste and my recycles? How you, how are you counting these people?
So I don't run the recycling center. Um, basically, for instance, I've just been down there. When we launched the program, I spent a lot of time down there. Um, currently I've kind of reduced that time as I focus on other things, but I think Ariana will answer that question.
Yeah, so who are the hundred and twenty four people? How do you know these they're actively certain?
Oh, the composters?
Oh, they?
Yeah.
So then when they sign up, they get a bucket. And so in town, we have they can go to the can after the recycling center. There's two cans out here at City Hall. So there's nobody actively checking and making sure there's no wrong composters.
Yeah, okay.
They don't really know that the program exists and this, they might know, but they're not signed up. They don't.
Okay, so please, my next question is the education piece. Man, it's wonderful. It's great. Um, I think people, people recycle, people take their yard waste responsibly. Curb side sounds wonderful. Let's say this does go through and let's let's do it. Who's, is it the city that is educating? What's what's what what this is about? There, not everybody is recycled conscious or under or just burn stuff in their yard. Like this is, there's kind of an education piece. It's kind of like, it's gonna take some like you said, there's certain people that even like I didn't wasn't aware. I guess I seen one at my friend of mine's house, but fully aware of even the program that's in happening right now. I, so I feel like there's a big education piece coming and I haven't heard what's the talk through on that.
So for the community compost program, signup has been through education events and city engagement nights. We sold like three buckets last time, but or they signed up for the program. So you're right, there hasn't been a large out um, like an education portion to every single person. There hasn't been a mailer saying, hey, sign up for the five dollar a month community compost program. I think looking at other cities in town, some of that education does come from the city. Um, just telling people what goes in each bin, with you look at bigger city, they put out that education. Now, would we, we'd be more than willing to participate, help whatever we can do to get it out there, but it would be a city, a city program. So, you know, I would, I could help with the education portion, but I think there's some things on your website you can put, you know. Um, this is an offer by waste management, so you go to their website to see what's allowed in your city parks. Um, so yeah, there is an education component that it doesn't.
You're just, you're offering a service to this essential, bringing it down.
And then and then working, you know, however we can work with you guys to set up a program that works for you and.
Yeah.
You know, I I'm totally in favor of this kind of thing, and I'll tell you what we do in our yard. We compost our food waste with red worms, and we've never had a problem with any animals wanting to get in there. And then we go down to the recycle center here, and then the guys that work in our yard also take stuff away. We have a a lot of trees and stuff in our yard. And I would love to see more education around this. I would love more people to do what we do, which is compost their own stuff and use their own fertilizer. So I think that there's, it's a rich area to talk about, and I think that it's a good time to do it. Um, I'm not sure what the best devices are about mix, you know, since we do our food waste, I know that that's a gooey mess. The red worms love it, you know, but it's it's um something that, you know, you, if you did it curb side, you'd want to make sure it was clean and controlled and that sort of thing. So I think there's pieces to think about, but I'm really in favor of recycling our organic waste.
And I think we have good examples from other cities will be on. I mean, there's also stuff that's happening in the legislation right now with how often co-mingle has to be picked up. Um, who it like so for the city of Winachi with the last organic management law that passed, the city of Winachi will have to have a co-mangled curb side pickup. So really, Elevenworth not only is cutting down on costs that you currently come out of your commercial accounts for garbage, but you're also making it more efficient because currently at the recycling center during large yard waste drop off period, it is over overwhelmed and within thirty minutes, I've seen that yard waste twenty yard or four.
Yeah.
And so people off they go and then they have to come follow with. So this would offer an easier submission for it.
Robin, and who would, if this is co-mangled, actually gonna put the yard waste and the compost in, say, a sixty four gallon, I could fit it there. Who picks it up?
We do.
You guys.
Okay, they're saying that's the server service along the off comes. We would have to figure out the rate, the rate, how to go about it.
Well, they would figure out the rate, we would just sign a contract with allowing them to serve this.
So you said she just.
But yeah, we felt that degree on the rate.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, folks have so much yard waste, they'd never fit in a sixty four gallon.
And so maybe the program was stuck, or maybe the program is a yard waste service, like is currently offered in East Winachi and Winachi for just yard waste and then opening up if a a person wants to do food waste, they would have a sixty four gallon, who they invite to include in their food waste.
Hmm, okay, okay.
But it would allow us to go into into the residential area and sure, it's a residential.
Do you currently have a contract with Winachi or is another?
So east, so in this area, waste management is the predominant is the only holder, and so they have those, each city has a contract with waste management now and the challenge based on L T C. So because you're a city, you have the opportunity to contract services with your company, the residents.
Have you, have you done this before? This kind of program?
No, we're brand new company.
You're brand new company.
Robert, when when you're gonna co-mingle, does that mean you have one can and you're putting your food waste and your gar and your uh leaves and grass and crap into one container?
All the good stuff, yeah.
Yeah. And then what you guys do with it? You go and just pour it into one spot?
So we pick it up and or can we go around to each residence and find that? We we can pick up yard waste and food waste in the same container. So if you had two programs, you'd be out of yard waste or a food waste, or you had a co-mingle, it doesn't matter. For our pickup sake, I can put them all into one vehicle. And so we would go around to each residence empty like just like city, the waste management does for the city for garbage and for recycling. And then we would take it to Wynton and make it into compost.
And so the the leaves and the and the food waste is all compost. You're not, you're not putting like a bucket of food waste and then your leaves and food.
If you co-mingle, it's all on the money, but they found that biweekly biweekly pickup is acceptable for holders. Composters like to see it weekly just because it's fresher, it's better for us, and it gives compostability, but the current legislation where they were going to require weekly pickup has just been reduced by weekly, so you know, that's a city line. Whether you want it picked up weekly is up to you guys.
And so when the, when we're not putting the leaves and and branches in, then you're just taking your bucket and putting it in the big container and you.
Yeah, you would just be putting your compost, so your food waste then.
Okay.
You could put hard, we can recycle hard, or it's like we have plastic, so you can line the bottom there and some of them stick. We do go through challenges in the winter with servicing food waste only. And and we do a lot of education in the commercial districts because things need to be backed. And even with our community compost program, it just reached, again, because not everybody is using bag and then it stays inside dirtier.
Can you compost meat? Like, we don't do that in our yard.
Meat, bones.
Bones, they do.
Pretty much edible, you can compost it. So all the whole thing stuff in the back here, you don't even need to know what it is.
You don't have to identify it.
It's a science experiment.
Take it out of the plastic first.
So potentially weave it up. A small driveway, uh and we've got stuff in the garage, cars are on the outside of the driveway. Here you have a garbage can. And we have a second can, and now you're saying there's gonna be a third can, eventually, right? If we're ready to part this program, so. It's a lot of space.
A lot of cans.
So like cans.
So.
They're doing it in Seattle. They're doing it in a lot of places. Winachi even does it.
So your recycling can is, you can only get a ninety six gallon, so you can't reduce that way.
Yeah.
What you would hope is that people composting, being more conscious about food waste would use their compostable can and then they'd be able to make the other, the garbage can would be the one that is smaller. But if we offer two different sizes cans for the program, you know, that also um, closes within that large space that three ninety sixers might take up.
So that would be a reduced rate for that for that resident, right? You do a tier, this can is as much or yeah.
Yeah, and that's what the current contract with waste management for our garbage currently says.
I guess there's one thing I don't quite understand. If we did this deal, would everyone in town get it or would they opt in and then pay based on opting in?
It's, that's really, I think, it's all be up to the city.
This would be an opt in.
Oh, okay. Just like recycling, people aren't required to.
Yeah.
It depends, it depends on what the money is, right? If we require it, maybe the rate goes down then.
Well, and right now, currently the way it says the only one that's going to be required to do curb side co-mingle and showing coming will be Winachi. Because their population size needs with the new organism. So there's no half to Elevenworth at all. It's just, it would be an elective service, an elected additional service to the people.
Well, if if we recycle at our ho- home, don't we get a break on our water bill? I've never heard that. Didn't we used to?
Never heard of it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert.
Wasteloot is really excited about this.
Yeah, all right.
I highly recommend, um, if you want to, you can like us to make it for a tour to learn more about the operation.
Fascinating.
It's pretty close. If it doesn't work.
No, it's.
My name's Ariana Jones. I'm the executive director of Wasteloot. Thank you for having me. I'll also try and make it somewhat shorter number. Running schedule. So starting with a little bit of history, today I'm talking about glass recycling. And so Wasteloot started in twenty nineteen, and we also started collecting and recycling glass in twenty nineteen. And that was when waste management removed the the recycling glass guidelines from co-mingle stream. And so Wasteloot first started with a small pressure. And then our pressure broke, and it was very hard to manage because we were getting a tremendous amount of glass, and it was only like a one bottle fee at a time pressure. And we were also removing all of the labels because all of the crushed glass, we were planning on applying it to uh different uh places along the landscape that want to and so we were moving all of the the labels. So short, long story short, uh, we started to look at general spring class, and so we utilized a model by the NetHow Recycles, which is kind of our sister organization, and the NetHow that also does waste reduction and sustainable initiatives for the NetHow Valley. So currently, what we are doing, and what we started to do in July of twenty twenty, is that we collect glass at the recycling center and they'll make you down there and bring your glass. Uh, and then we haul it to Strategic Materials in Seattle. And so they basically crush up the glass and then they're able to put it almost next door to our bag, which is a bottle manufacturing location, and so they produce the bottles. So that's where all of our glasses. We started um collecting and recycling glass through donation or through a grant from the Isaacel Fund. And that covered us for a couple of years, and then we started trying to do it by donation based, and that's where we're getting it now. Okay, so I'll be looking just briefly at a big picture of glass recycling, the recycling center overview, um some ways that potentially we can start collaborating with the city more uh on waste fees, cost savings, the rate diversion, and then looking at maybe the potential of a sustainable work group in the city council. So this is the big picture of glass recycling right now. This is the northwest. And you can see here, there, this over here, this is green, that's covered by yellow. We have in Seattle both glass manufacturers and the glass recycling process, which is really unique. If you look at all of the other areas, we are pretty close to having a really amazing market here. And so that's why we have been putting the extra effort into hauling it over because we're within that two hundred mile radius. So glass is a hundred percent recyclable endlessly, so it doesn't get downgraded like plastic. Uh, I could talk about the dead glass over and over, but I don't have much time. Like I mentioned, naturally, we have better access to glass re-manufacturing than almost everywhere except for the east coast. The east coast also has a lot of it. I'm looking at this one more twice block. Results from recent audits of the city's commercial waste swing uh that we conducted in twenty twenty showed that up to twenty percent of waste by weight was made up of glass. So it's all literally in the casing rooms and helping restaurants are in the area. And most of those um are literally placing cardboard boxes full of glass bottles into the garbage unit now. So in twenty twenty three, uh, wasted recycled, so we hauled a hundred and thirty two thousand pounds of glass over to Strategic Materials. We are currently getting five hundred dollars per haul. We started out with just one monthly haul, and right now it's almost like every two weeks or three weeks because there's so much need for this. It was the only service for glass recycling that's offered in the Winachi Valley. We do have a handful of businesses and testing rooms that are also running their glass, and that's when it really heats up with a binary. We're testing what brings their glass or a restaurant, they have thought. Uh, about right now, fifty percent of the cost is covered by donations. When we set up the donation model, we were hoping that we could reach a hundred percent and it would be good to go. And we've been kind of not pushing the donations, but we highly encourage it, and this is something that Wasteloot has been trying to work on a little bit more. It's just opening up the transparency about operations so that people better understand what's happening to the glass recycling and how much it costs for us to haul it. So because we only get about fifty percent of the what we spend on it, we're every month losing a little bit of money, which is really hard for a small nonprofit. So looking at collaboration on uh where the city council and city at large could potentially partner with us, um we have looked at waste at large and thinking about the restructuring um of the the waste fees and the fees that are happening. I think there's a rate fee uh that's coming up. Is that correct?
Rate study.
Study, rate study, yeah. So looking at waste as a bigger picture so that we can look at waste diversion as an opportunity and consider waste diversion, both composting and glass and co-mingle recycling as an opportunity to save money. And so that we can create incentives for businesses and communities. incentives for businesses and community workers so that they reduce, uh, the garbage that they're sending to the landfill and so that they increase the working rates. So looking at cost savings, restructuring rates could potentially add funding for waste diversion programming. Businesses would see cost savings and potentially be incentivized to recycle or compost, which would be great. Right now, the businesses that are taking the extra steps are having to pay extra because of the way that our buildings in downtown, it's a complicated structure that we have right now. So opening up this could potentially make it more incentivized for businesses. Um, annual driving fees can be cut by seventy-five percent if businesses recycle and composting. So really looking at, how can we look at all of the garbage rates and creating those? So mostly today talking about glass, because I wanted everyone to know what the situation was, and opening it up, so what can we do to work together? Not only looking at potential rates, but also forming working groups or opening it up, what you all think, because recycling is a service and, uh, Waste Loop isn't really set up to provide these types of services. We are just filling the niche until something else happens. Right now, at large, Eastern Washington and the Department of Ecology is trying to take steps towards glass recycling, but it's moving pretty slow, um, and it's really challenging. And because we're in a close enough radius to the glass manufacturing and reprocessing in Seattle, they do, uh, want us to continue the haul because it's the most cost savings and the, the least amount of carbon footprint. Yeah, so just opening up the conversation and opening up questions. Glass can be a confusing thing, and it's been eye-opening and really challenging thing for us right now.
Well, Arianna, I'm just really grateful you've got a program, period. I mean, that's the only place, that's the only place in the valley, uh, so that was pretty amazing in itself. Um, the two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, that was, what was that about? That was the, the city pays, or?
Yeah.
What was that? Was you, I mean, I don't see how you guys can afford to do what you're doing.
So this is not what we pay, this is like the dump fees by the city.
That's what that is.
Yeah, so this, either just looking at opportunities to divert more out of the landfill, which would in, in the end be a cost saving as well as a benefit for the environment.
Are the dump fees supposed to be for just city residents?
It's really the downtown.
It's the commercial as well, it's the commercial that we pick up now, that we don't have the, the residential.
Do we, do they end up paying though, so that that balances out, they paid for it, or are we paying that whole lump?
We're, that's all your commercial, those are the dump fees for what we pick up, which is basically commercial and the larger multi-family, we pick those up, and that's what we're paying to dump.
And they pay a month for the service? Or they don't?
Oh, yes, yes, that, they pay per pickup, really, I mean, it's not just per month, it's per whatever we pick, however many, some of them are, some of them are doing seven days, seven days a week.
Does it balance out what they're paying in, in that, or is that over and above what they're paying?
Now, the two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars you showed, the tipping fees, that is paid for by the commercial accounts.
Out of, by, by what we receive from them.
Yeah, and it's really just a snapshot of showing we're spending a lot on tipping fees, and the more that we can divert, the better, for not only financially, but environmentally, and so opening up the conversation of how can we create more incentives for businesses in our community to divert glass, compost, all of these things out of the landfill. Particularly looking at glass right now. It's, we're elsewhere in that overland.
Yeah, so how's the, I mean, how, do you need funding or some other cash flow to make that happen? Because I, I don't see how, like you said, a small group like you could afford to keep hauling all that glass.
Yeah, so we do need to acquire additional funds to continue services. Uh, and we've looked at things to incorporate more funding from downtown businesses, uh, like Social B is a great example, they have an additional, uh, point zero one cents for a model that's sold that goes back to Waste Loop so that we can recycle the glass. And so, working with businesses downtown to add any things like that, uh, but the cost on the consumer rather than the business.
Right.
Uh, and so we're looking at those, uh, but then we also need to be able to collect glass to really make it the most beneficial for businesses downtown, because we want to make it as easy and accessible as possible. And right now, uh, we're not collecting at all, and we're, we still have too much to handle, and we're already hauling a ton of glass, like, one haul, a couple of weeks ago, was almost ten thousand pounds.
Hmm, five tons.
Yeah.
Hmm. So the other thing, though, that does throw, I mean, a whole nother, not to get too far afield, but there's movements afloat and bills right now to, to go towards a deposit, um, for glass. Anytime you purchase glass, you pay a deposit that would, and they would have to receive them back like Oregon does, like other states do. So that would change that whole model.
Yeah, we're awayed out from, uh, the deposit system, but the producer responsibility that's coming through the RAP Act right now would give more funding for recycling efforts at large and, and for packaging such as glass. And so there are potentially some really exciting things that we don't like, uh, for that, for Washington State. And really, I think this evening, I just wanted to open up what we're doing and to problem solve as a community of, of how we can tackle this together, um, and really incentivize businesses to divert these really precious resources, um, out in the landfill and into beneficial reuse.
I was in Oregon in the seventies, I think, when the bottle bill started, I was thinking about that. Um, I'm totally in favor of recycling glass, wow, it's just so environmentally sensible. And in our town, because of all the bottles downtown and all the glassware, you know, we just have an amazing opportunity to do it, so I'm very much in favor. Right now, you're only asking for a thousand dollars a month, you know, for, that's not very much money. So, um, I hope we continue talking about this.
For something that's, when it's recycled, for a product that's recycled, glass is a one-one. You can make a new bottle with like no loss, it's pretty amazing, right? And the weight of it, and the volume that it takes up, I mean, this should be a bigger conversation, I think, than, than a lot of other recycling things. So what you're saying essentially is the two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, if we do a look back in a couple of years, we partner, we do the program with you, we figure out what this looks like, and you can say, we spent two forty-one, we saved this many tons, and the bill went down to two hundred and twenty thousand, we, you saved twenty thousand dollars, yes, you spent twenty grand with us, but it was a net, we're environmentally positive, and eventually we go even better, right, ideally, for the city standpoint. So what is it that you, how do you, what's a program you think? What are, what are programs or the other recycles are working with small towns like this? We're so unique and amazing that, that three million people visiting, there's so many advantages, and this is one of the disadvantages, the waste, right? So there's gotta be other communities, Soldan California, or whoever it is, that are also in my country, California, what are, you know, what program do they do? Are you aware of those programs? And then what do you think? What is your, what, what's your wish list?
Yeah, so currently, right now, it isn't incentivized for a larger caller, like Waste Management, to take care of this challenge. And so it, it's up to the smaller communities across Eastern Washington to, to kind of tackle it on their and so like the Shalan, for instance, they invested their rotary, uh, waste funds and continues to run in that glass crushing program. And that's how they handle all of their glass. Uh, but I think it's, it's a, moving forward, it's really about partnerships and getting everyone invested into like what works the best for everyone. Because I know that a lot of the tasting rooms, they don't want to put their glass in the garbage, they just don't have any other option. Uh, and so we want to find ways that can incentivize businesses to make better choices, uh, and more informed choices, so really just opening it up to the community of, okay, these are ways to divert, uh, garbage, and if you divert uh, waste, then we can incentivize you with X, Y, and Z. And, and I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, and really what I wanted to bring is just kind of the opening of the box, uh, of starting to problem solve this and, uh, because I do feel like it's a community service, and although nonprofits do a lot of community services, hauling is, uh, is usually not one of those, uh, because it's a, it's a big expenditure for us.
To, I mean, when you were saying, what Kayla's doing, and maybe there's other businesses that are doing that, um, it's like one percent of the planet, right? One percent of the, of the visitors, right? Pays for this program, it's a, it's a chamber company, maybe, it's a play, you know, it's a triple partner with you and us and Chamber Con.
Yes, yes, most definitely. I think there's, there's a lot of exciting things happening that businesses can start to, um, hop onto, to be more sustainable, composting, recycling glass, even starting to recycle at large or at all, or many other things down the list. So we have talked with the chamber about sustainable business guides, and that's hoping, something that we're hoping to continue to move forward. Uh, and in the meantime, you know, I'm looking at the bottom line of just the cost, uh, to, to do business right now, and and how much it's putting us back by losing money every month.
You got the demand. You're there, you got the demand, the business is there.
I think, um, you know, one of the thing, I, I mean, I think you're right, when we look at a rate study and stuff, I think one of the things, the it's the carrot and the, and the stick sort of thing, that one of the things I think needs to go hand in hand with the benefit of why you do this is adding the cost to be so high for their dumping fees for them. They will do the sorting out and doing that, and then you can pay for it, because the, the, the balance that you have to do is, we still have to pick up garbage. We still have the people, we still have the salaries, we still have the garbage trucks that have to get paid. So, you know, you, you get rid of it all and get them down to nothing. You, you know, you, you, then you just say, okay, we're not picking up anything, I guess, but, um, but anyway, it's a balancing act, right? So the only way I see you do that is if, if the, if the fees to, to throw away are high enough that you can cover what gets taken out and make it an incentive, but but they're gonna do it because they are so hot.
Yeah.
And that's the only way you can cover it.
And filling should be the most expensive thing.
Yeah, by far.
The biggest, right, and all these generations, and we have the biggest opportunity, not only with local composting, but barely local market for glass, and all of our other recycling gets sent, you know, across the country nationwide, and the fact that we're just over the mountains, um, not only, uh, across that fair, but are we manufacturing, it's huge.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for starting the conversation.
Thanks, Arianna.
Thanks.
Um, finally, our council retreat, some dates and topics, this will just be to introduce them here, but.
So, yeah, I'll send out a do the poll after this to find out when you guys want to meet. Uh, last year, we met on a Friday afternoon, I think it was in the beginning of May. Um, so I'll start with if you guys want to do a Friday, you want to do a Saturday, you want to do a Sunday, what do you want to do?
It was an afternoon, we started.
It was a Friday full day, sorry, started at eight AM, we ended at three. And it was May twenty, I think.
April thirtieth in twenty-one. April twenty-ninth in twenty-two. And May nineteenth in twenty-three.
I think Friday's a good idea.
Yeah, I like Friday.
People like Fridays. I'll send out a do the poll with Fridays.
Thank you, sir.
April and May. I'll also ask you to email me anything that you'd like to discuss at the retreat, and then we can, I can lead a discussion about that at that meeting.
Great, sounds good.
Alright, thank you, sir. We've got a five-minute break, and then we'll gather again for our regular meeting.
And I, I had dessert tonight, and I have the little boxes.
The financial? It's on tab four, I have three questions. She's up. Okay, on page four, it's the three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars city paying all Milan Jazz Association pistol rental with Leavenworth Fund. What is, what does that mean?
That's what I just, earlier in twenty twenty-three, right? Wasn't that the Leavenworth Fund? I mean, we.
Chantel?
Yes, that is payment for a group that applied and received Leavenworth Fund, uh, lodging tax dollars, and so this is payment to them for their event.
Okay, and so they, that's what they applied for it, right, right? Okay.
Correct.
On page, excuse me, again, on page. Next, I mean, five at the very bottom, the one thousand three hundred and five dollars for the legal housing P-two lot uses on covenants, what, what was that?
So when we were exploring the uses and the potential of the lease of the P-two lot for the Affordable Housing Unit, Foster Garvey is our bond attorneys who dug into that and had meetings with myself while Selby was away, and Tom Grafstra, to go over the legal covenants of the original bond.
Okay, and lastly, um, on page, no, there's two more, on page five, or, I mean, page eight, I better put my glasses on here. Down at the bottom, I was just curious, what was the helium for?
Uh, Tom, you may be able to address this one, so this is a shop supply item charged to our ER and R fund, so it's the utility crew department. Tom, do you know what argon and helium is used for down there?
Oh, okay, I thought helium was the thing that made.
It's an argon slash helium. I don't follow up specifically on that, but I, it's probably, but my guess is the gas, the flux for the wire feed.
Okay, thanks. And on page nine, at the very bottom, one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars for CPR certs.
So that was all staff, uh, getting trained for our, I think it's bi-annual that we all get CPR training, and that was the instructor who performed it for all of the staff that were involved.
Okay, was that the instructor fee then?
Yeah, correct.
And then did this, uh, the certs came with that, so there's no charge?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's correct, we all got our own certification cards.
Okay, thanks.
The Council of Waters, I just confirmed, the argon helium gas blend is a, it's for, for a welder.
It's for what?
For a welder.
Okay, I thought you were blowing up balloons. Yeah.
Have a lot of fun down there.
Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So much.
Second.
And Sharon seconded, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. Next is comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Anybody here that would like to ask a question, make a comment?
We have three attendees on the webinar, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Do we have anyone from? Do we have anyone from the high school here? Are you uh attending because of a class?
I am.
You want to stand and let us know your name and what?
So I'm Angela Bumteria, I'm. I'm stood out and I'm standing by the door. I'm in from my um student, please tell your service.
Great. Well, you want to come up and get a pin? We used to do this, you know, back in the day before.
Right there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I hope you learned something. All right, seeing no other public comments, we'll move on for our resolutions and ordinances in action. Number six is Resolution O two twenty twenty four, Waste Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project Acceptance.
Tom, thank you, Mayor Corry. Council members, good evening. Uh, this resolution Friday this evening is associated with our phase one of wastewater treatment, a wastewater improvements project. We had three phases associated with this overall project. It's uh tied to a nineteen point five billion dollar grant loan package that the city received in twenty seventeen. From USDA rule development. This phase one project is was an upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant primarily driven by the regulatory requirements. For phosphorus removal, TMVL that's in the Wenatchee River for dissolved oxygen. And uh this project started in twenty twenty and was completed in twenty twenty three. And normally we would just do a final contract voucher certificate through the council, but because this is USDA rule development funded, they require a formal resolution to accept the project. I just a brief order of improvements as noted in the right of my agenda. But the biggest thing again is the tertiary treatment system for phosphorus removal. We have new flocculation tanks, twin disc filter system, which uses chemical injection, which filters out phosphorus as well as the biological removal process. Uh, new headwork screening system, upgraded clarifiers. We got a new sludge de-watering system. We used to use this belt filter press, which was not as efficient. Now we have a centrifuge that basically just. It's a it's a washing machine that spins at over three thousand RPM and just spins the water out of the slug. And then last but not least, the bi- the biological phosphorus removal. The final contract amount with tax ended up being uh. Just over, just under rather nine billion dollars at eight point nine five billion dollars. And again, here that will finalize the acceptance of this project. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to accept.
The Leavenworth.
Oh, go ahead.
No. Okay, the Leavenworth City Council moves to approve Resolution zero two dash twenty twenty four. Accepting the wastewater collection and treatment facility improvements, phase one wastewater treatment plant improvements project.
Second. Moved by Sharon, seconded by Clint. Any other questions or comments?
And is is our water clean now?
It is. We, yeah, our phosphorus removal system works well. Uh, we've been optimizing over time. We had one mechanical pickup during twenty twenty three, which we rectified. Other than that, little advance everything's been working fairly well.
Do we get tested by an outside agency or do we self-test or vote?
Well, that's a good question. So we are not accredited for phosphorus removal. We're working towards being lab accredited. For phosphorus removal, we're accredited for other uh lab components of wastewater treatment plant, but no, we we send our true. Phosphorus levels out to a third party lab laboratory and those are what are reported to ecology.
Thank you.
Okay. Would somebody need to take a course? From water treatment plant to be able to do that certification?
Yeah, so currently we have a group two wastewater treatment plant, so you have to have a group two wastewater treatment plant operator certification. You need to put it just a second part. Yeah, just having your, just a, well, group one likely under. Overseen by group two is what you would need to do.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
And we'll go to item seven is interlocal agreement with Link Transit on the Glacier Parking Lot. Uh, driver single stall restroom. That's Andy.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Um, this is the interlocal agreement for the Glacier Parking Lot Driver Single Stall Restroom. So. Um, as part of our Glacier Parking Lot uh P six improvement project, which is currently being advertised to contractors right now. Um, we are building a restroom for public use and as part of that, Link Transit approached us. And asked if they could include a single, like a separate driver only stall as part of this restroom. So. Through the design process, we've gone back and forth with Link Transit and ultimately landed on the most efficient option. Being um to include their single stall driver restroom in part of the same building as our restroom. Uh, so as part of this, we have designed the entirety of the restroom, including their portion. And and so this interlocal agreement is for both the design, bidding and construction services. Um, oh, sorry, construction and construction services um that includes their restroom. So as you will see. The interlocal agreement does include compensation of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, Link will be paying their proportionate share of the bid that we receive from the lowest bidder. And we will be opening those in just a couple of weeks on uh February twenty eighth. So we're excited to see. Um, what contractors come back with for us on that. Um, and then ultimately we will have a supplemental agreement for. The ongoing repair, shocking, cleaning, maintenance, all those things associated with them having um a restroom in part of our building.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I just have a quick question.
Sure, I do too.
We don't know what the uh city will have to pay to finish the the stock.
No, not until we get bids. What's our estimate?
I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't fully hear that question. Would you mind repeating that?
What's the estimate for the cost for? Do we have an estimate, an engineer's estimate?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head what it is for just the restroom. Um. I know that the the hundred and fifty was under the proportionate share that we had assumed for. You know, all phases of the project for the restroom. Um, but the the project total itself, I believe they listed as between two point. Seven and three million dollars, if I remember correctly. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
Yeah.
Um, how many stalls are in the men's and the women's restroom?
Uh, there's in the women's, there's two stalls and in the men's, there is one stall and one urinal. And there should be a layout that was included in your packet under tab seven.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, but I could just see, I saw wheelchair. I just um wasn't figuring out the stalls.
Stalls here.
Yeah, so as you walk in, you'll see, yeah, I think the mayor's showing you, but there's a stall on either side of the door in the women's and then the men's has a single stall and a urinal.
Okay, um, other quick question. Do we, on the uh link one, is it going to say link, you know, on the outside door to, or would it just look like, maybe it wasn't a bathroom? I guess I could see people lined up and and maybe somebody deciding to kick the door in.
It would just be a lock.
Okay.
They'll have like a keypad to enter in that one, so there won't be the option for the public to use it. Um. But Sharon, that is a good question. I I'm not. I'm not sure what we're showing for any signage on the door at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Did Link uh approach the city or did city approach Link with this opportunity?
Um. You know, it's been quite a while since we started this conversation. I believe the city. Why, I believe Link approached us about the restroom initially, um, but we had reached out to them because we will be building. Um, a wider bus pullout as part of this project. So we were just looking for areas where we wanted to coordinate or had the opportunity to coordinate with them on this project. Um, but the restroom specifically was was them.
So there's there's a restroom at Segway, a terminal at Segway.
Mm hmm.
I'm taking bus, my son takes it every day. Uh, and now we're going down the roundabout with the bus instead of through the neighborhoods. Is there a a distance that they like to see between restrooms that their drivers? It seems like that's really close proximity for a line at twenty two that runs to Wenatchee. Through Kashmir, there's no Kashmir didn't do a bathroom. We have one in the city of Leavenworth. They want two now. Hundred fifty thousand dollars, up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars is what they're kicking in. And then we're maintaining it and somebody vandalized it, used it all us. I'm just curious.
Uh, yeah, and and to be clear, we we have not agreed to maintain it. We have not negotiated that portion of the contract. That will be supplemental to this contract. Um, so that portion, we just wrote into this agreement that we would negotiate with them before construction was complete. Um, but to be totally honest with you, I'm not able to answer why they want it. I just know that they do. Um. And I don't know if you have a better answer than I do.
Thanks.
A a link board member.
But then, but that's on them. I mean, that's their board that decides to spend dollars, not us. I mean, this is their. You know, we we need the restroom for because we're going to have a large parking lot there. So that's us that's driving, having restroom. And then it's them that's saying, while you're doing that, can we get one?
And and truthfully, I do think that it, um, you know, it's a benefit to us in the sense that they are contributing to a portion of our building. And so. There is some cost savings there for us to, including it in the same building. Um, the increased cost. Of including their portion and having them contribute is greater than. Uh, I'm struggling to explain this clearly. I think you hopefully can understand where I'm going with this, but ultimately like them contributing to, yeah.
Right, the point is, their 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 dollars are exceeding the cost of plumbing in a pad for one extra toilet. They're giving us, we're getting a little bit more out of this, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Did I answer your question? I'm sorry. I'm struggling to hear the mic a little bit.
Yeah.
And my question is, uh, I'm I'm not clear about the location. Are we talking about the DOT?
Yeah, DOT is. I'm sure, right.
Yeah, it has lots of names, Glacier Parking Lot, P six, old DOT lot. Um, so ultimately it's between Argonaut Syndicate Smith and. Um, the DOT Maintenance Yard.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Hey, I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Leavenworth and Link Transit. For the addition of Link Transit Single Stall Driver Restroom within the city of Leavenworth Glacier Parking Lot Restroom.
Second.
Okay. And moved by Anne, was seconded by Shane. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously. And I think Andy, you're on again for the Big Belly.
I am, yes. Um, so. The next item we have before you is the Big Belly Connect Services Agreement and. Um, I know there's a pretty sizable write-up here, but I wanted to go ahead and give you a little bit of background info, especially those of you council members who are new. Um, I gave a presentation at a study session in October. Um, regarding Big Belly dumpsters and our interest in them, but I just wanted to give you a quick background on. Why we're pursuing these, um, and ultimately what the cost savings is that we have found. So, um, my understanding is city staff originally. Uh, was interested in pursuing Big Belly bins before I started, I believe it was in twenty twenty, if not before. Um, and then. We restarted that conversation uh with Big Belly in twenty twenty three and have. Have been in conversation with them for quite a while, negotiating what this process would look like. So, um, in October, we came. To city council and presented our findings and I'm. Let's see, I'm gonna, um. Let's see if I can share my screen here. I just wanted to give you a quick. Oh, let's see here. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. So I wanted to just give a quick rundown of the the presentation that we gave to city council in October. Um. So ultimately, we were looking at the current operations in the downtown core. So, um, we calculated that. Uh, between our streets and utilities crew and our parks crew, we ultimately are spending thirty nine man hours in the downtown core collecting. Um, street can waste. And so, um, currently our streets and utilities is responsible for going through and collecting waste out of those bins in the morning. Um, and then they. Spend quite a bit of time on, this was, this example was Thursday, but one day a week lining cans. And then our parks crew has a person who's dedicated five days a week. Um. Their half half of their job duty is pulling liners out of bins in the downtown core. So we came up with a total of about thirty nine hours a week. Person hours per week that are spent in the downtown core. Um, and then this is kind of an overview of what these Big Belly dumpsters offer for us. So. Um, we are interested in five of their Smart Max bins and ten of their Sense Max bins. And so, um, these have a proprietary technology that senses the level of the garbage. Um, and can send an alert to our staff. So that we can avoid the situation we had in late November, early December this year, when we weren't expecting our tourism to be as high as it was. And we ended up having bins that were overflowing and people had stacked trash all around them. So ultimately, we'd have about ten of, or we would have ten of these smart bins that sends us an alert saying that the bin is full. So our staff is aware. That we need to go downtown and collect. Um, and then the other forty five bins are the um Sense Max bins. And those just have a level sensor on them. They don't send an alert to our phones, but our intention here is that we would strategically place. The smart bins that do sends, send alerts out to us in locations that are indicative of waste in the rest of the area so that we could pretty strategically. Place those in for the most cost effective uh method. Um, so with Big Belly bins, we forecasted that we would reduce our total labor hours down to eight hours per week. Um, so these bins also have a compactor that are internal to them. And so. Um, it's, these bins are an increase in size from the bins we currently have, plus with a compactor, um, we would have. We have a, um, what was it? One fifth the number of collections that we currently do. Um, so we ended up calculating that this was a save. We we would save thirty one uh labor hours per week if we went to the Big Belly bins. Um, and so when we presented this to council in October, we looked at the difference between a capital purchase. Or the rental, what Big Belly calls the connect option. Um, and so we ultimately determined in that presentation. That um city staff recommended we go with the rental program. That way any of the the maintenance would be on Big Belly. Um, and then as part of this too, because it is proprietary technology, we wanted to test how it works and um. Have the option at the end of our rental contract, either buy the bins or if we had an issue with them, um, it gave us, it gave us an option. Um, to explore. Other options instead of Big Belly if it ends up not working out. So what we presented, um. To council was an eight-year contract and that's what the the prices that are included in the presentation slides show. Um, the direction city council gave us was to instead look at a shorter duration contract. And so what we have before you tonight is. A five-year contract instead of the eight-year contract that we were originally proposing. Um, and so I do have the monthly cost, but I apologize, it's not pulled up right now. Um. I'll wrap up this presentation and then share the the current dollar amount with you, but what we were finding with that thirty, the reduction of thirty one person hours. Per week that would be spent in the downtown core on collection was equivalent to a savings of seven thousand three hundred dollars per month. So I'm going to end sharing my screen. Um, I think. Um. Apologize, I'm just. Pulling this up, um. So what we are proposing with our five-year contract is five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars per month as opposed to that seven thousand three hundred dollars per month in. Labor hours that we're currently um spending in the downtown that would be saved. Um. I apologize, I'm trying to work off one small screen. With the, with another screen that is not lining up very well, so I apologize, I'm fumbling my way through this. Um. Well, so one of the last things I wanted to touch on. Um, is that we have procured these off of the Massachusetts statewide contract, which is a government purchasing cooperative. Um. We are able to purchase things by extension of other purchasing cooperatives. Um, and we we did just get information late today on. Um, and we, we did just get information late today on. This purchasing cooperative. Um, so we do wanna run it by legal counsel. So if you choose to make a motion on this tonight. Um, we just ask that the motion be revised. To include contingent upon legal counsel approval in the motion. Um. And with that. I'm happy to turn it back over.
Any questions?
Why did you decide to go for five years and not three or, you know, what, what, what was about five years to be like?
Yeah, um, so ultimately we negotiated the contract with Big Belly and as part of that, um. We, there was language in there that at the end of the contract period, we would need to pay to have. The bins removed. And that was something that city staff felt was not agreeable. So we ultimately were able to negotiate with Big Belly. And, um, from the conversations I had with them, my understanding is that is not something that they have included in previous contracts. Um, and so as part of that. Um, we negotiated the terms as well. So they calculated on there and that was approximately forty thousand dollars. Uh, for removal fees that they normally charge under their contracts and, um. As part of that, they weren't willing to have that portion be applicable to a three-year contract. Um, at the same time, we, we have. Talked to other people who've had really good experience with Big Belly bins. Uh, Link Transit, for example, has their bins throughout and they're excited to be purchasing more. So. Um, we're, we're pretty excited about implementing these bins. Um. And also at the same time, you know, want, wanna have a, a reasonable contract with them. And so that was kind of how we came to this agreement, um, between the three and the eight-year term. Settled on five.
Thanks.
Um, the picture of the big bin that you, uh, big bin, whatever it is, that you showed, Big Belly, excuse me, that you showed. Um, when the door thing in front was out, it showed all the cans and everything in the, in the bucket. Um. Where do people put their garbage? Do they pull that out and drop it in, or is there someplace else on the can?
Oh, yeah, I can, I think that was in the presentation I had. Um. So it's a hopper style, so you will pull, oh, I see. Let me share this really quick so I can, um. Let's see, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Um. So this is an example of what it would look like when we would go to empty it. Um, so. So Sharon, this is not what people would be seeing. Um, unless our crew is emptying it, it would be a hopper like this style. So you'd pull the door open or use the foot pedal to open it. Um, and then when you put your garbage in, it's similar to like a. Uh, postal service box where it has a hopper, so it closes, you can't reach all the way in to access the garbage. There's an internal. Um, component that you need to then close the door before it would dump into the garbage. And that's what makes these more, um, bear resistant. But then when our crew goes to actually empty these, they do need to open this front panel door. And then this in, internal bin, um, is what will be picked up by our garbage truck and dumped in. Into the garbage truck itself.
Okay, just wanna make sure naughty child couldn't be dropped in there.
Yes, absolutely, understood.
What are the dimensions? It can't really gauge. In fifty-five. Fifty-five units, that's what we're looking at?
Yes, um, I truthfully do not have the dimensions off the top of my head. Um.
Units compared to now? I mean, you guys have a map of where you guys ideally would like to place these?
We do, and unfortunately, John, Sean's our park supervisor and Rick Emmons, our streets and utilities, um. Field supervisor, we're not able to be here tonight. Um, and they're the ones that have those information, but. I know that we've worked together to strategically determine where they want these bins and then. Um, working with them is how we came up to the, the fifty-five bins.
The volume and where they're placed is like the sweet life. Has it gone through that? Sounds like.
We have, yeah.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorizes the mayor to execute. The Connect Services Agreement between the city of Leavenworth and Big Belly Solar LLC releasing. Fifty-five garbage bins for sixty months with a monthly cost of five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and. A one-time shipping fee of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars contingent on recommendation from legal counsel.
Second.
Whoa. I'll give it to Rona. Moved by Shane, seconded by Rona. Any other questions? All in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. This is gonna be a big help for operations. They've lost implement of maintenance programs, we need to build the grounds in some more time, you know.
You were gonna make your life easier?
Okay, Tom, discussion on cemetery code update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this evening, so, uh, there's a couple. Code items on here. Again, they're just discussing the intent here is just kind of tease out what we're thinking for a subsequent code amendment. Um, with the, with regard to the cemetery, this is something that we've discussed in the past, but. Our intention is to move forward with recommending formally a, a big reduction in winter full-service burials. To remind the council, uh, we've. The existing council members know about this, but the, but new council members. What they need to understand is that our cemetery is full service and we do full service burials right now year-round. We wanna start. Uh, restricting winter burials for the following reasons. Primarily. We, uh, we experienced headstone damage quite a bit when we prepped for a winter burial. Cause historically, there could be anywhere from two, three, four feet of snow at the Mountain View Cemetery. And we're just kind of put on notice, like, hey, there's a burial, you know, we try to do it within a week. But it takes several days and we've calculated out to just to recoup winter burial costs. It, it sometimes would be fifteen hundred dollars worth of equipment. Labor, fuel costs, and our open and closing fees are the same, whether it's summer or winter. So we are not, uh, we are losing. Cemetery revenue when we prep for a winter burial. And again, so not only is there headstone damage, but there's also quite a bit of turf damage and then just the scheduling that's involved. And one thing that's worth noting is our, is our municipal code. Does not put liability on the city for damaging headstones. However, when we damage a headstone, it's not, it's sometimes infeasible to get a hold of. A family member to let them know that we damaged their headstone and ask them to fix it. It's very expensive. For example. Uh, a double headstone, we can't, we recently damaged, it's a margin of like ten thousand dollars to a year. And we, by the way, we don't, we, we pay the cost, even though our municipal code says so. We, again, just the feasibility of tracking down family members and also just. Sensitive, this is a topic. So with that being said, um. We are going to propose a code that. Like, that basically states that winter burials will not take place if there's one foot of snow or more measured at the Mountain View Cemetery. And we will, uh, be consistent with, with our rate and fee schedule that if there is, in fact. Some exception that's granted, the open and close fee will reflect actual costs. And we did do research, there, there are opportunities and options for. Uh, loved ones to, to store their remains for up to ninety days. Uh, for example, Heritage Memorial, uh, they, they offer. A program for three hundred and eighty dollars, they can store up to ninety days, uh, remains. And in terms of capacity. Heritage Memorial has up to, they can handle up to five and then Chaplet Valley can handle four to six.
I understand. Yes, Tom, thank you. Um. Thank you for bringing this issue before the council. I've done a lot of thinking since this first came up to the council and I. I have some strong feelings about it. And I first, I, I like to address the framing of the discussion. I feel like this, the discu- the description. Sets up a binary where either as a council, we're agreeing to limit burials in the winter months. Or we're willingly inflicting damage to our cemetery. So. For me, I'd like to give an opportunity for Public Works to explain. Why processes that many municipalities use that have hard freezes, that have snows. That they use to safely bury and timely bury their community members during hard freezes. Why those don't apply for us? Because for me, I will tell you, my initial thought is. One of the base core. Concepts of the social compact that a city has is that. We will take care of our dead and especially our family members. There's a part of it that wants to say, figure it out. But help me understand why those processes that. Cold winter towns have don't apply for us.
So one example is Clayalm, they do winter burials. Uh, they, however, they, they contract out their winter burials due to staffing. One thing, one issue that we have is we don't have dedicated cemetery staff. Historically, it's my understanding, we once did, but we just kind of reduced staff over time. Um, so that's one area that if we did have a dedicated cemetery staff. Or at least one person, perhaps we can increase the level of service during the winter months. Avoiding the, avoiding the headstone damage. Uh, that's a good question.
Is there laser plotting?
So we can't, I mean, the issue is, is. Where, where you, where we have to clear to accommodate the, the dig, we ultimately have to drive over headstones. That's.
Sure.
And then some, and also too, it depends on somewhere where the way the headstones are plotted, it's my understanding. So some of them are placed. Right in the wheel track where we have to move the snow to, to open up, to, to basically accommodate a dig. So that's one area, but.
You gotta clear more snow than just for the, the burial. You gotta clear enough for the. The gathering, right? And so.
So I, I'm just gonna say this and then I'll be, and then I'll clear the floor for other folks. I realize I might not be talking about this with the clearest head right now because I'm, I'm thinking about this in very personal terms. But, um, for those of you who know or don't know. My wife was very, very, very sick in the last part of this month, November, December, to the point where I was thinking about what. What I might have to do. If things take a turn. And I cannot imagine the level of, of. Distress and trauma that would cause for my family if. My wife had to lie in state for weeks or months while my kids were trying to get closure on something. So to that end, I realize it would cost money. I realize you might have to figure out. Manpower issues and it might cost the city more money. But for me. My answer is, I get it. But figure it out and come back to us and tell us what it'll cost. Because I don't wanna tell a family member that they're gonna have to wait. That's my thought.
Understood. Thanks, appreciate it.
I, I actually was thinking along the lines of Clint also that, you know, the idea of three months or. Or not being able to, especially families perhaps that are, the other members are buried there or the family's been here for decades or. You know. Um, and so, but how to solve, um. Can you charge, could we charge more for a winter burial?
That's, that we already made that change in the rate and fee schedule.
Ah, okay.
So, because our goal is the cemetery, in theory, once it's all filled, we need, it's, they're gonna be operating off an endowment fund. So if we don't. We don't properly set the rates now, we'll be subsidizing cemetery operations in the future.
So we've already done that part, okay.
What it doesn't cover is you, you, you pass on those charges of the clearing and the digging and all of that extra. It doesn't cover that ten thousand dollar. Headstone that you damaged.
And so.
How often does that happen?
Uh, since I've been in the city, I would say at least we did three instances and that's been since G twenty twenty-one.
So once a year?
Approximately once a year.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Lo.
Yeah, I know we talked about when we did the cemetery plan, pre-lined, um. Burial sites and will those pre-lined burial sites improve this process?
Uh, it, it would, it would obviously remove a lot of effort in terms of excavation, but still you have the snow clearing. You still have the snow. That's a good point, Lo, thank you. So we do have intentions to expand the cemetery at some point. And, uh, we would like to go pre-lined, so that's basically sites and have them. There's a lot of capital costs involved in that, but it'd make operations easier.
What is pre-lined?
Basically, the, this, this concrete. Basically liner, the liner is, is placed ahead.
Right, so it's just set in, we're all set ahead of time.
And then it's, it's set below the mound. So once it's all restored, it's, it's turf on top. You just gotta dig down a foot eighteen inches and then bolt. The liners.
Okay.
It's really not. Oh, I'm sorry, Rona. I, I'd like to just take a second to let the council know that those pre-lined. Burial sites are very expensive, um, but they have. Of benefits. So when that does come before the city council in the future, please just be prepared, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's a big expense, um, but I'll put that bug in your ear right now so you're prepared for it.
I, I just throw out an idea about this because it seems really important to me. Um, what about the idea of not having, of having a different gathering place in winter that isn't right around the burial spot? So that you would gather there and you wouldn't have, maybe have to do so much plowing, clearing. It's just a thought.
Would that preclude someone who, um. Like in my case, my husband's buried out there. Um, I will have my ashes. Put under the headstone. Would that stop that also?
Uh, that's a good question. It's, it's the full burials that are the issue. It's a cremains. Uh, it's less effort. But it's with the service though, and, and a lot of times, a lot of times cremains will wait and a lot of folks will just wait till spring. To have service. But it's the full service, it's the full burial and or the service that takes place during.
How many full service and full burial, winter full service and full burials have we done over the past five years?
That's, that's a great question.
Is it, is it one or is it twenty?
It, it varies. It, it varies quite a bit. There's really no consistency with cemetery. And this is purely anecdotal, but in my time, you're like so far not that one, we haven't had any. Winter full service burials this winter. Um, I would say on average, on average, it's.
Yeah.
It's two to five, I'd say, in the last probably. So it's not, it's not a ton.
Right.
Yeah. Um, a lot of times, and, and that's our thing, without having dedicated cemetery staff too, uh, like in December of twenty twenty-two. We had a, our sto- our storm cycle was. Pre-frequent, so we had a, we had, I know we had a full service burial there that really, it was, it was cumbersome to schedule with that. We made it happen.
Tom, um. So Clayalm contracts, did we, did we check out other cities like Helenam, you know, did we have winters? Like, how do they handle that? Do we? You have kind of a broad spectrum of other winter towns and how they do this?
That's a good question. Uh, it was just very cursory and, and it's been some time, I apologize, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm from Wisconsin and I checked Wisconsin and Minnesota. They, they certainly do burials in the winter. Uh, they have, you know, they have to equip themselves with frost tooth, stuff like that. It's extensive. Uh, but I think a primary issue that we have again is just not having dedicated cemetery staff.
That would make a difference.
It would.
Could that be a contract maybe?
It could be. It doesn't have to be necessarily staff. That'd be all negotiated.
Right.
Those impacts as well. It's a, it's an, an option.
Right. I'm kind of like with. I have some real reservations about having a family in the grief process, wait three months. I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but wow.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. I mean, start with that.
We had a time of COVID where people couldn't see their loved ones when they were still alive and passive. I mean, it was pretty dramatic. This is along those lines essentially, postponing it.
So, uh, basically, my takeaway sphere are definitely keep pursuing other options.
Yeah.
And, and that's a, that's okay. I appreciate the discussion. Um, so I will, I will circle back with operations staff and, and put together. At least a more comprehensive list of options and what other municipalities do, for sure.
Okay, and Tom, please, no, I'm not, I was not breathing fire at you in my comments. I appreciate you. With your fiduciary, yeah, concern towards this city and whatnot, but yeah, thank you.
No, good discussion.
Do you think that, um, there would be volunteer groups? That would maybe, you know, if there was a big area for folks to come, that they would volunteer to shovel the area out?
We think it's beyond shoveling at times. Yeah. Cause, cause if we have, for example, if we don't have a winter burial until February. The snow out there can be extremely heavy.
Yeah.
Is there a way for us to geolocate the headstones so that? In close proximity, we could, we could flag them so that there's less likelihood of damaging them if we need to go out there in the winter for a burial?
So we do, we just acquired a GPS unit that has sub-centimeter accuracy, so we can GPS every headstone. So we do, we just acquired a GPS unit that has sub-centimeter accuracy, so we can GPS every headstone, it's just. With that being said, that will, I mean. Got GPS, I guess the locations, if we have, like for example, if we do have a burial, perhaps we just locate the. Headstones in close proximity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, let me touch base with the operations staff.
Okay.
Cool, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Hmm. All right. I think we got the next steps on that one and. Also, snow removal of sidewalks, Tom.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is another proposed code update, so I just want to brief you on two items of our existing code. Uh, one, sidewalk snow removal. Is. The responsible party is placed on the adjacent property owner in commercial districts only. It excludes residential, so it's the way the code states right now, the only folks in the. Commercial districts are responsible for removing their sidewalks snow within twenty-four hours, I will say that's that's contrary to. Most municipalities, a lot of them, I I don't want to say it's exhaustive, but. Most municipalities, especially all in the valley anyway, but what common practice is all adjacent property owners remove the sidewalk snow. Regardless of what district, the issue that we run into is that federal ADA, federal ADA regulations require that if city has sidewalks, they have a mechanism to maintain them. And that includes snow removal, so right now with a code without having, we don't have a mechanism, whether it's the adjacent property owner or the city maintains all sidewalks. Uh, so there's that issue we need to address, and second issue is that currently our code allows folks to place snow in the roadway. As long as it's quote spread evenly. So that poses an issue for one, it's it's subjective, there's not a measurement, it just says spread evenly, and secondly. It does pose a roadway hazard, for example, if somebody's traveling down, say, Ski Hill Drive, and the road is. Not necessarily bare or wet, but you know, there's no snow on it from plowing, and then also you can get into four or five inches of snow from somebody blowing it out of the street. That poses a, could pose a safety concern. Um, again, that's an unusual practice, based upon other municipalities, usually it's prohibited to place snow in right away. So we definitely want to address that as well.
We actually allow them to blow the snow into the street?
My code, it's allowed.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I made sure, I got somebody's case, we're doing that.
It's a non, because it's un, I will admit, it's very.
Doesn't make any sense.
And also too, I mean, if you load up the driveway, the road in front of your driveway, the next time the snow falls, that class improvement act.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's okay, as long as you can get out before.
So, uh, so the discussion here is is. Staff recommends at this point. Placing the sidewalk solar level on the adjacent property owner, not only in the commercial districts, but all residential areas, all districts of the city. And what we talked about this before, I mean, a city could. In the city can take over every single sidewalk, but we'd have to double our fleet. Our skate, skate steer, blow a fleet.
Are we, we need to do this per ADA, I mean, this is, we're just, we're not in compliance right now, is what you're saying.
Correct.
So we, it's one of it, we've got to decide one way or the other, city or we need to pass a, uh, code for the residents. Both sides of the street, or just if it might.
All sidewalk, all sidewalk, yeah. Because I mean, right now, I mean, just for example, so the city maintains the north, the multi-use path on the north side of Pine Street. And we will get our ADA ramps, but the issue is, is. ADA ramps on the other side of the street. Are not being touched, and so the crosswalks are. They're they're not fully accessible.
So residents, if residents are required to do this, then what, then we're gonna, that enforcement, right?
Uh, yes, in in a perfect world, that would be enforced, and also the code, the proposed code language would allow us to contract out that service and then. Charge the, charge the cost back onto the adjacent property owner as an enforcement venture.
My concern is that some areas it would be more onerous than others, I'm thinking specifically of the areas along Tumwater. And Meadow Drive where the streets are incredibly wide, like Grand Canyon wide, and so when the plows come through.
Yeah.
It is an incredible amount of snow that has piled up their feet.
Right, and we can adjust operations where we don't bury the sidewalk, we only blow up to the curb, especially if this code is, if this goes up the advanced section.
Right, yeah.
Or similarly, uh, some sections of Commercial Street where we had the previous discussion. Where we have to clear the road wide enough, but that does dump all the snow on the sidewalk, and it makes it particularly more challenging for those property owners to clear the sidewalk.
That's right, and that's primarily due to, the reason is because they're street park, metered street park.
Right. So I think this is a little bit nuanced.
Well, the other interesting thing in our town, like on my street, is there are no no sidewalks, so some residents won't have to do this at all.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
That's not gonna hit everybody evenly, no.
Not at all.
So in area, and then in other areas like. Uh. Like Pine, where it's safe routes to school, one side of the street gets their sidewalk done. The other, the other side of the street is gonna feel like they really got the short end of the stick.
Right, right, and the unfortunate thing again is we need to have mechanisms in place, whether city services, city forces, or on the adjacent property owner. Or we could see if there's contract services.
The person would get a. Assess or a bill or a ten dollar pay fine at the door.
That would be enforcement action, what I would, yeah, what I refer to just a moment ago, is like the city contracted those services out, but keep in mind, they paid prevailing wage, it would not be. It would not be inexpensive.
Right, yeah.
Explain one more, I don't, I don't think I quite understand it, let's take Pine, so the big wide side is always cleared.
Yeah.
The other, I walk there all the time, the other side.
The city maintains that side.
The other side isn't.
Right.
But it has to be because.
Because federal ADA regulations, if you have city sidewalk, there needs to be a mechanism in place for maintenance, that's what it states, something along the lines.
How how long have we been tardy in this?
Uh, the last code update was in two thousand thirteen, that addressed sidewalks and all mobile, and I don't know what it was before that.
Okay. It's not a great solution.
Hmm, no, no.
No, again, so I mean, this is just a discussion, so at this point.
Yeah, we're gonna have a hearing. Like in a month, right?
No, at the end of this month.
Well, it is, okay. So, schedule, yeah. Yeah. Uh, the hearings, it's still a discussion.
Sorry.
The hearing from, um, the next council meeting is still just a discussion, we don't lay anything.
No, it'll be a hearing like ten minutes.
Yeah.
But we don't have them yet.
Yeah.
Okay, the funds would come from the general fund to pay for this?
This would be street fund, like this, usually street fund dollars, so to compete with paving and maintenance of our street.
So in the only way I'm seeing this would happen, because you gotta have enforcement.
That's correct.
I mean, that's gotta be part of the picture, so if you do that. That probably means contract, most likely, I would think. And. That's. Pretty, that's really expensive, I mean, that's gonna be, so they would get a big, the bill would be more like seventy-five bucks or a hundred, I would think, I mean, I don't know.
So for example, so city went actually, they they enhanced their enforcement with their sidewalk solar level, and if it's not done within twenty-four hours, and if I believe if it's. During certain circumstances, they will contract out and have a contractor on prevailing wage remove the snow and then they'll. Issue a bill with the property owner, people hate that, as an enforcement mechanism.
You know, I have one more thought about this, can you tell us how many streets? Have sidewalks and don't, because it may be in Leavenworth if the majority of streets don't have sidewalks, and so because it would be so unpopular and unbalanced. It might be worth it for Leavenworth, the city, to do more rather than less, so if we could get that count, I think.
Yeah, so so we have approximately fourteen miles of sidewalk that we maintain half.
Hmm, so we would have to double our.
So we'd have to get double our. And and.
I'm not asking that, though, I'm asking of the streets in town, how many don't have sidewalks compared to how many that do? I sort of think that there are more that don't have sidewalks than do have them. I'd be curious about that number, I think the public would care about that.
Yeah, so we have our sidewalks to school map, it's on our website, we can, I can pull it up.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
We we do have that information on the GIS mapping too, Tom, so we should be able to get that number for the hearing. And the city council can move that hearing date out if they'd like to have more discussion.
It's springtime and then we implemented for next, everybody, so I forgot.
I think a good point would be move the date, water out, have a discussion, and get a better grip on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Get some more data.
I mean, there'll be people who aren't strong or able to shovel, you know, there's, it's complicated.
Okay, so more, so more, so takeaway there, I think, so. I can give you. We can have more discussion on this, but again, if we're gonna take it over, we we get, we have to double staff and double our, scale on our blower fleet, we calculate those costs right up to the easily. Um. I will note, I will note that adding staff, they see like an easy task, but we're just, we're out of space. In terms of housing employees and parking vehicles, and so, I mean, that's a, that's a real constraint. I would say if the council is is. Leaning towards the city take care of these streets, we we'd like to have to look at contract services.
Yeah, because the other thing you run into is if you don't have a high snow year and you don't need those, but you've got them on staff. You know, then.
Yeah, what do you do, and hiring?
They shovel the cemetery.
Oh, we didn't have the snow, that's the problem, you need them both, oh, I see.
I guess the big issue is just. How the impact is on the residents and and how you. It doesn't, I mean, there's no easy way to maintain your ADA compliance without.
A mechanism.
Right, the impacting the residents to take care of, because that's, that's how it's done, I mean, regardless of where it's snow towns, that's how it's done.
Can you also provide us the bill for compliance? If it was put on the residents to clear their sidewalks and they didn't clear them, what that bill would be? Every time the city had to go in and and clear their section sidewalk?
Yeah, I can, I can estimate it.
That would be great, Tom.
We can also give people a break if they did their own sidewalks. I'm serious. No, I don't know, like, take a discount off there, some other bill, I mean, I know no one will love this idea, but I'm just being creative.
Right, somehow incentivize folks to.
Yes, I do mean that.
Hmm.
Yeah, they could have neighborhood patrols.
Well, that's, that's all I had on this, on this topic, as I do, just just to highlight a couple of concerns, so it sounds like the February twenty-seventh may be pushing. The area, yeah, pull these items.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Looks like we were eliminating quickly number twelve. But eleven, we might still have one that said, uh, well.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, my internet's a little unstable, but Andrea has agreed to pull up the proposed amendments. So if I turn off my cameras just to help with the internet connection. In any case, uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed at the last two meetings. Amendments to the codes, and these amendments are. Meant to be clarifications, items that have been identified as needed for. Uh, processing permits and whatnot. Uh, and I'm gonna run through what these amendments are right now, but council members, I want you to know that. Uh, I will be sending you the Planning Commission packet by the end of the month. And the Planning Commission will have their hearing on this item as well as cottage housing and flood regulations. In, uh, the first meeting of March, so we have a lot of regulations coming to the city council. I have always tried to do at least once a year where we do this code cleanup. Uh, these minor inconsistency issues that need to be addressed, and that's what I'm gonna review with you tonight, I'd encourage you. To write down. Any section or chapter numbers that you have questions on, and rather than tackling them at this meeting. Let this meeting just be an introduction and information. Track your questions and then. Reach out to me and the email.
You're breaking up.
Great, we can sit down, we can fall, can do anything. Are you guys with me?
Um, you're breaking up, Willa.
Thirty percent.
Yeah.
More than that.
Well, was she saying we'll get those at the next meeting and then literally we're voting on it at the same time?
No, no, she's saying they're going to planning in the first. You know, of of March, the Planning Commission should do the hearing.
Oh, a their hearing.
That they're, then it'll, then it'll come to you.
Okay, good.
Willa, I don't know if you can hear us, but.
I, I just came back, yep, so sorry about that, yeah, I'll keep my video off. Um, what I was saying is I'd like to run through these changes as information for you tonight, please track any section. That you have a question on and reach out to me and we'll, we'll make a review possible. Uh, and I will be sending you the Planning Commission packets by the end of the month, so you'll have. These amendments and the other amendments that will be heard by the Planning Commission. To review and discuss with me as needed, so. Twelve point eighteen, it would be a new code section. Which would clarify primarily for public works, the construction of street sidewalks. And any construction on public property. Repair and maintenance, when it happens, how it's permitted, and what inspections, that's a. Key element here is what inspections are required. For those type of developments, Andrea, can you move to the next page? You'll see we have inspections required. So currently, when they do build new streets and sidewalks, or even do repair and maintenance, we do have a permit process. Um, and we do require, you know, them to build to a certain standard, but this will provide a formal framework for. Inspections and for the city to ask for those inspections. Can you go to the next page? In chapter seventeen, that is our subdivision regulations, we want to reference this new title twelve. So when they're doing a subdivision, we'll get that review for inspections as well, so that's what. This little section's on. Um, just below that, we have another new chapter of code that is twelve fifty. And that is when and how we require traffic impact analysis, and the big. Ticket item here is all of the components that need to be included in that traffic impact analysis, so. If you go to the next page. You'll see it has kind of the content, organization and content of the. TIA, what we're expecting and what needs to come in, and that is a big document, so it's another page of amendment. You want to keep scrolling through. Along with these changes, and you'll see the title twenty-one. Gets touched on in a few different areas, but twenty-one ninety. Is our definition section, so here we're adding what a TIA is. And then we go to fifteen oh four, uh, this is our building regulations. We had already updated our rate and fee schedule, but this section hadn't been updated, so this is a cleanup. Can you keep scrolling? I realize I'm moving quickly, so keep scrolling on through. Like I said, if you have questions, go ahead and jot down what section and we can touch base again. Uh, there's another document, Andrea, you want to open the second?
There's more. Oh, wait, it's almost.
Yeah, oh, geez. Good nighttime reading.
I don't know which one I did.
Seventy-two thousand.
Yep, that's it, that was the correct one.
Oh, that was, oh.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I think that was the one I just did though.
That's the one you just did, but the one you had all done before was different.
I'd just say often, you know. The right one.
Okay, so this one, we're proposing removal of a duplicate code section. You'll, you'll see that a couple of times in here. I lost the screen share. And we're also proposing that in our lighting standards, we currently have a reference that lighting permits go to the design review board for multi-family projects. Uh, the design review board has requested not to do those reviews. Uh, they're cumbersome. It's outside of their normal process. Uh, staff agrees it's not necessary for multi-family development to go to the design review board. So we are, uh, recommending removal of that code section, that reference. And then we go down a little bit to parking standards. If you could just scroll down just a little bit.
Is this the right one?
Yes. Can you, can you scroll down just a little bit?
I don't think. Wolf is not seeing what you're seeing, Andrea.
The screen share is on, uh, proposed amendments fourteen point two eight and fourteen point twelve. That's what we're seeing on the screen.
Right.
I think they're both the same document. It just hasn't opened to that one. Yeah.
So you're scrolling.
So the, no, the one I'm seeing at the top is titled twenty twenty-four code amendments consistency and minor updates.
But we don't see it here.
Cause that was your showing up there is not what you're sharing on this.
I'm sorry, everyone. Okay. But to same one that you. But I don't know.
Yeah, you can close that one. And then open up, open up word.
Now I'm just in one window. I don't know that we're opening up.
Sounds like she was going over a lot of information anyways.
Yeah. I'm a little lost, to be honest with you.
Yes, we're gonna go over a bit of information and I apologize for that. Um, but it's just to give you an overview, a highlight. Uh, and to the extent that you feel like you need to ask questions on, say, a topic. Just say, you know, the parking issues, what amendments were there, then I can work with you and talk through what amendments we're doing with parking. Oh, I see movement on my screen. Yeah, right there. Okay. So if you could stop right there. What we had talked about with the parking standards is when we had updated the bed and breakfast regulations, the planning commission asked to, and the city council asked to hold off on allowing bed and breakfast to access off the alley until the density question was addressed. Well, this winter, late fall, the city council adopted the planning commission's recommendation for how to manage densities of bed, bed and breakfast. And, uh, so this was the follow-up to that. Now that we have that issue resolved in code, the recommendation was to allow B and Bs to access either from an alley or a street. So that is listed here. Um, can you scroll down? Boundary line adjustments. We have a section of code in a non-conforming section that allowed for people to use a boundary line adjustment and create a lot that was seventy-five percent of the original. But this section of code was never in the boundary line adjustment section of code. And so there was a disconnect between the two. So we're adding it into the boundary line. So it's very clear. If you do a boundary line adjustment, you do have this option to have a smaller than normal sized lot or historical lot. Can you keep scrolling? Okay, right there. Um, oh, just up a little bit. This section of code is under the subdivision regulations and it has a lot of red line in it. But it's a lot of old standards that we don't use anymore, or we referenced in other documents such as the Leavenworth standard construction details. So we're simplifying this whole section of code and updating it with the documents that we actually use and reference for construction, say of those streets and sidewalks we mentioned earlier. If you can scroll through to the next section. Uh, home occupations. We are making a couple of changes to home occupations. We're, um, creating a, a purpose statement. So we're taking this intent statement out of the definitions and putting it into code. And then we're recommending that home occupations group A, which are the ones that typically have very low or no visitors coming to the home, be classified so that we can administratively approve ones that don't bring any traffic to their homes. Say it's just an office that they're working remote out or selling business product on the internet with. That we can approve that with the business license. So we're trying to streamline things so we can make those happen quicker. And also the home occupations are limited to a certain size in the rooms in the home. And we're recommending modifying that. So there's only one calculation of size. It'll be a percent. And, um, instead of the two standards we have now, which is not only just overall size, but size on any given floor or level of the house. That's made it kind of complicated and difficult to get information from homeowners and calculate. So there's a lot of red line in the next couple of pages for home occupation, but that's the bulk of what we're attempting to do for home occupations. Yeah. There's group B. Keep scrolling on through. We'll just keep scrolling. All right. In the past, we've had questions about bonds when they apply, development agreements when they apply. Uh, so this new chapter fourteen fifty is intended to pull from other code sections, existing code for the most part. And say, if you're doing development, here's what your fees are. Here's what, how you could do a bond. Here's how development agreements or cost sharing are done. Um, there are a couple of different sections of code that had development agreements. So again, we're hoping to streamline and create consistency for bonds and all sorts of payment methods and make it more transparent for the public too. If you could, yep, just keep scrolling. There's a couple of pages there. There we go. Design review board. This is their supplemental regulations. This is the change for the multi-family that we talked about at the beginning of this document. So you can keep scrolling through on that. Again, we're just taking out, uh, the bond section on that one. Excuse me.
What section?
Oh, stop right there. So what happens? Yeah. So what happens is when I move the bond section from the design review board to the new bonds section. So where we put in that duplication, such as this one. Such as this one for yard requirements. Um, I have to go back later and present it through the city council to have it removed as a duplicate item. So that's what's going on in this one. I'm pretty sure I caught it, but for whatever reason, um, it, it didn't, it didn't go. So. Okay. Non-conforming, single family dwelling additions. We're just moving, uh, some design standards to a new chapter, new section of code. Uh, excuse me. This section of code is for non-conforming. And so we wanted to keep all the non-conforming stuff in the non-conforming chapter. Building height is a duplication. And then eighteen thirty-six is, um, being moved. This little section of code had two elements related to bed and breakfast, and I wanted to move it into the same section we use for bed and breakfast review, which is the conditional use section. So I'm moving this from regular zoning to conditional use. Um, this is title twenty-one. This section of code identifies what the boundary review board makes decisions on. So we were removing the section related to multi-family housing. If you keep scrolling through, we're almost at the end. I appreciate your patience here. This section of code is fourteen sixteen. It is residential's design standards. It was developed as kind of a standalone code section, independent of the zoning code, although it typically has a lot of components that would normally be found in a zoning code. And zoning code is required to be reviewed by the state. Child, chapter fourteen was not reviewed by the state, and there are some inconsistencies in it, particularly around, uh, manufactured homes. Um, so we'll chat about that in just a minute, but I'm proposing that manufactured homes go into the zoning code. And we're not proposing a lot of change into those rules, but if you can keep scrolling down just a bit. We are proposing a residential section eighteen thirty-six oh two five oh. This would move from the fourteen sixteen into the zoning code, and we would recommend removing the requirement for the eaves. The eve overhang requirement for residential structures is not compatible with the typical manufactured home. Um, and under state law, we have to allow manufactured home designated manufactured homes, which are uh, defined in our code. So we're recommending just removing of that section altogether. City, uh, staff is also recommending, stop right there, um, removal of requirements for trim around doors and windows. Uh, that's a design component. Um, and then all additions and architectural features shall be permanently connected to the dwelling. That's just a building code issue not needing to be specifically called out. The remaining sections of that chapter, which we're proposing to be removed are already addressed in the zoning code in another fashion. So to summarize, that section of code we just reviewed is in title fourteen, but it's more appropriate in the zoning code. So we're moving over those components that relate to zoning and design and building of homes. The final change we are recommending, and this will help with things like the downtown, uh, new restrooms at front street park and the restrooms at the glacier park. Those items are actually within the setback requirement off of the highway. So if you can scroll to the next page, you know, staff is proposing an exception for public structures. I personally generally do not, um, favor treating the government agency differently than anybody else. Uh, however, in this case, it makes a lot of sense. We don't want to have, uh, public structures so far back from the public right of way that they are not utilized in the way they're meant to be. The patio cover above the park restrooms will be great. It needs to be right there at the sidewalk. So people can get in and out of cover and it'll provide that benefit. And I think, uh, the restrooms at Glacier are the same type of facility that just needs to be close to the public right of way. So in this case, it makes a lot of sense to generalize and allow public structures to be within this typical setback. So for that reason, those reasons, we're recommending that we just bring it down to a zero for public structures. Thank you for bearing with us as we walk through a very technical document. We had talked about putting this on the study session, but the study sessions are really full. Um, so we utilize the council's lighter agenda to walk through this complex, um, project. I will ask that it be on the study session for March, uh, the first of March and the twenty-sixth of March before your public hearing. Along with the other code amendments we'll be reviewing. So we'll have more time with it. But like I said at the beginning, if you have questions, just even if it's general, what was that? Um, shoot me an email, give me a call and we can walk through just about anything. Again, thank you for your time.
All right, Lilith, are we gonna go ahead and set the, um, public hearing then for the end of March at this time, or are you on a wait?
I, I would appreciate it if the city council felt comfortable setting that public hearing. Um, if you feel you'll need more time to review these amendments, there'll also be amendments on the cottage housing. And then the state department of ecology had provided us amendments to the flood regulations. Uh, so depending on the city council's, um, desire to dig into those codes or comfortability with the staff recommendations. In, in either case, March twenty-sixth would cover at least one of those hearing items. If, if the other ones get spread out. It's at the city council's direction.
Are you considering on the twenty-sixth, Lilith? Just covering what you covered tonight, or you're also talking about these other additional codes that you mentioned?
Um, I haven't scheduled the other codes yet, so I can bump them. But I know we want to get cottage housing through the city council as a priority as well. So depending on the overall agenda, it would be nice to at least get the cottage housing on the twenty-sixth as well, but I'd bring that to your next packet as an action.
Lilith, the, the word I'm looking for has escaped me, but when you put these together for us and you've made a change, I can't remember what it's called, that you write underneath it, why you made the change?
Yeah, the comment field. And so in this packet, which we didn't really highlight, we have the changes on one side of the page, and then I had a comment on the other side of the page to kind of balance. Not all changes showed a comment, but uh, most of them have a comment with them.
This seems massive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping you think of it just in bigger terms because, uh, there's a lot there, but there's, they're just sm- mostly small tweaks or corrections or supports to staff, like adding the TIA. Um, I hope you think that's a slam dunk, cause that's, that's just a, a document that we need clarified, but we have reviewed many times. Same with the construction and inspections. That's. That's very straightforward. Um, yeah, but if there's a topic or something you heard that you're like, oh, that seems kind of too much. I'm not sure what that's all about. That's where I'd really like to talk with you a little bit more detail. Um, and we can focus our study sessions on those particular items as well.
Well, I would suggest, Lilith, then that that you. Get them this copy of this sooner than later. They do have a chance to go through it on their own and.
Yeah, the planning commission hearing packets will go out before the end of the month, so you'll have those. And it may go out as early as um the end of this week because uh. Yeah, because I'm, I have a limited work week next week. So.
Yeah, the ones that are um duplications, you know, you're you're deleting them because they're duplicated somewhere else. Maybe you could say that, and then we won't wouldn't pay so much attention to those because.
Yeah.
Or else.
Yeah, there, it is noted in the side uh column. Uh, and I had thought about grouping things, but once you put it in your track changes, it's hard to move it around without it. Trying to re-track your changes. But having said that, I hear what you're saying, and I agree.
Well, I for one, Lilith, am hesitant to set the twenty-sixth as. The public hearing, but it just seems like there's a ton of stuff there that I laced over. Um, and. Yeah, but I'm, you know, I'm just one voice. I just. Are we gonna have, so how many sessions? We're gonna commit part of our study sessions to this? Each each one?
Well, we we I could make that request, yeah. We certainly could break it up into each study session between now and then. That would give us one, two, three study sessions.
That would help.
Okay.
That would certainly, yeah, that would certainly help.
Yeah, I agree with Zeke. It seems pretty dense, so I'd like some more support.
Okay, well, we'll we'll look at that. In the meantime, if you wanna set the hearing and we can move it or extend it to another date, time, place, certain if we need to do that. Or I can bring that to your next agenda, however you'd like to proceed.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think since there's still just a lot of questions and stuff, maybe. At least if if we waited and set it next time, since that's, I mean, we've still got plenty of time to set it then. And then maybe they'd have their uh feel more comfort because they've seen it and had a chance to go over it themselves. Really hard to absorb. Yeah, it's hard to absorb all of that, but I think if they get. Their their copy and get a chance to look at it, then they'll have a better idea.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I do appreciate your patience while we walk through that.
Thanks for taking us there. So you got us started anyway. Looks like all three of these things got us started. We'll uh skip twelve and go to council report sharing.
Oh, gosh. It's long, really long. On January twenty-fourth, um, went to the Chumpstick Wildfire Steering Committee, C W S C. Next meeting is Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. The program will be dealing with the effects. Of wildfire on fish and wildlife. Please plan on coming. We, you know, we're not. Remember, um. At the Firewise meet, the big meeting we had here, and Ross Frank gave us a list of things. I've lost that list of things, and I've asked to get it again. We have, in my opinion, have done nothing. And I think with this, you know, being the number one. Place target in the state, I think we've either, we've gotta dig in and do some stuff, and we're not. We're just kind of leaving it up to the powers that be. So anyway, um. Um, the Chumpstick Wildfire Steering Committee is also in the final stages, is completing uh new literature and brochures. Um, they say no, don't forget birthday on Sunday, April forty-first, at Chapman Park. Um, they also want to involve the city in more of what we are doing. There is a town hall event coming up that will feature as a keynote speaker Sean Norman, who has a long career in the fire service of California. And was the battalion chief during the Paradise Fire. The um C W S C has spoken to him several times. He's now retired, excuse me, but does lectures based on what we learned. It will be a very interesting program. The event is free. Um, there will be event flyers and more information coming soon, and that's on Thursday, May second at the Snowy Al Theater. Um, on January twenty-fifth, I attended the Osborne Playground Committee. Those members include John Shones Parks, Tom Lockholder, Public Works, myself, city council, and community members Maggie. Richter, Lisa Ravenel, and Catherine Ferguson. We've been meeting a couple of times a month since July sixth. And we have some, we're planning also a little section in there with some senior equipment. Uh, for seniors, and so we're um gonna be conferring with physical ther- a physical therapist. To um kind of, we don't wanna put in some big thing that maybe nobody will use, something that is needed, the basic kinds of things. So I'm really excited about that, and um. We hope to finish the project no later than August or October. And on July thirtieth, I attended the community engagement night at the Fest Hall. On the thirty-first, the next day, our Fest Hall walk walking group was going to get bumped. Because of um cleanup from the engagement night. And bless our our Kalian, who's the head of facilities, and his crew, they scheduled to clean up after we left. And then finished walking, and um this gesture was highly appreciated by all walkers. It made us feel like we mattered, and that's important. February fifth, a few of the Upper Valley Historical Society Board members. And a couple of community members went on an informal tour of the Chumpstick Grange Building, which is located across Gustav's. Matt Cade, president of the Greater Levers Museum, led the tour. Nine people attended. The Greater Levers Museum needs more space and plans to lease the Grange Hall to grow. Our tour was followed up by an Upper Valley Historical Society meeting at the Fire Hall. Really interesting tour through, it was way bigger downstairs than we thought. And um I, it's been a while since I've been in there, and I'm always, whenever I'm in there, kind of keeping one foot by the door and the other. In case we start flying, I've always felt like we're gonna slide down the yellow button. Yes.
And over the river?
Somewhere buried underneath things. Um, we would be that part of the museum then partly. February sixth, we, I attended the Red Barn History of Ski Jumping. John Lundin was the speaker, and our uh local resident, Don White, who hopefully many of you know, was presented a plaque for as many hours of commitment. And I was not expecting the great fabulous program that it was. Um, the first ski jumpers, they jumped eight feet.
Is that them?
Oh, yes, and there were ski jumping in all different states, even in Seattle that I didn't know of. They kind of make their own thing and then just jump, you know, like eight feet and then sixteen feet. And of course, now there, this guy knows every little thing that possibly happened from the very beginning. It was a fabulous presentation. I I was just kind of dragging my feet going, thinking it would be really boring, and I'm so glad I did. Great. Um, on the seventh, I attended the planning commission meeting, and a cottage cottage housing was the main topic. Also, one of the better meetings I've been to with the planning commission. Sometimes. They're they're just hard to follow, and the last couple have been really, really, if they're easy to follow. I need that. Um, and the uh February eighth, Osborne Playground Committee met again. And um I attended a study session tonight, and here I am with the council meeting, so thanks for listening.
But no report to give at this time.
Yeah?
I also don't have a report.
Zeke, um, I'm going to uh, one thing I'm doing tomorrow is I'm gonna testify for the. Uh, but B I Zoom for the Senate Bill fifty-three thirty-four to pose uh to allow us um. Attacks on short-term rentals and bed and breakfast, so. That's the end of my report.
Is short-term rentals motel rooms?
No, they're, they're in the commercial zone.
Short-term rentals are the houses.
Not short-term, yeah.
Non-interac.
Non-interac. Yeah.
Yeah, and Shane.
Uh, on January twenty-ninth, I had the pleasure of meeting with each department head. Lilith from Community Development, Tom from Public Works, and Chantel from Finance, and. Got a better understanding of what they all do and how they help the city run and. Uh, just how vast, you know, the public work department is and everything that they do, and and it was um. It was really good to see, you know, how dedicated each of them are to, you know, their their departments and their staff, and I was really impressed with. You know, their presentation and all the information they had to give. Um. I also uh attended the community engagement night on January thirtieth and was just inspired by the turnout and, you know. Uh, you know, participation from. Uh, the community and getting to know uh all the project projects that the city has going on. And then on February sixth, I met with Caitlin Benninger, uh, the executive director of U V Mend and. Uh, walked around the community cupboard, thrift store, and and she took me on a tour of, you know, the residential um. And, you know, the the housing developments that they have in town, and it was really a delight. End of my report.
All right, thank you. Roland?
I attended the same meeting as um Shane and Travis, and it was a great meeting from staff, really helpful. And I thought I'd try to talk about my medical situation too, because it's really atypical for me. If I commit to something to not be in it a hundred ten percent, to not show up all the time, to not read every email. But what happened, I think you know that I had a couple of emergency room visits for pain. We thought it was a back thing, and indeed, there's a disc thing going on. But I also have organ dysfunction, blood levels that are off. I need organ surgery in Seattle and find a specialist. I'm being given medications to try to help, but they don't always, and then I'm dealing with insomnia. I mean, like, I have so much going on that was completely not suspected. So I, and still I can't sit very much, so my days are spent just sort of. Seeing different doctors. I have like six providers now working on stuff. And it's just a really strange time of my life to try to be onboarding onto council when I have all this medical stuff going on. So I decided that, a- and the other thing, I, you guys may know this, but you can't always get tests, test results, you can't see specialists. You know, so I had to wait like five weeks for just an MRI, just for my spine. You know, I'm still waiting for tests and won't be back until March.
Yeah.
So um my idea is, you know, I wanted to come tonight, see if I can do it. I've been here almost the whole time, so. You know, we've almost made it to the end, and I feel good about that, and I just wanna give it another month, because I'll have another, I'll have more evaluations. We'll know when the surgery is, that sort of thing. So that's what's happening. Thank you for your patience. I never would have suspected that what I thought was like a little back problem is all of this junk. So that's what's going on, and you know, you should tell me if I'm missing something or you really need me, cuz it could happen. And then I'll let you know in a month from now how how it's going.
Thanks, Ron. Thanks, Ron. Travis, after that, you can do it. I mean, best.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, of course. Um, I um, yeah, also with Ron and Shane, attended, uh, bent with the department heads. Everything I expected, I've said it before, this is Leavenworth two point O. I think everybody is amazing. I think everyone that works for the city is doing an amazing job, and it's really great to dig in and learn. Chantel, Lilith, of course, and Tom, of course. Um, really good stuff, really get a good ten thousand good view of what they're all about. Um, gives us good understanding, you see, council, and our job isn't to engage them and tell them how to do their jobs, but it's really great to get an understanding of that, being new. Um, I did take the tour with Ever Valley Men with Caitlin, um, basic, with the properties, with the thrift store and the pantry. Um. I didn't realize, and it's on the sign, that the thrift store was related to the Ever Valley Men. We've we've gone there a lot. My son moved in a year ago and. You know, he did some new, you know, he just decorated his room with some of the lights, and he's just, he spent like every, it's like twice a week he would go to that thrift store. Um, and so it's great now to learn that we've been supporting the community. I thought it was a for-profit, cuz it's so well done. Um, everyone that's a manager for those different, different parts of the organization are amazing as well. Um, and then um, I went to the hearing examiner on February ninth. He does such a great job. Um, it's really great. If you guys haven't seen any of those, I'm sure you guys all have. Um, it's always really nice to kind of sit in and listen to the way that's organized and. Um, very reasonable. Everything was 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 on board. There was a um. A sign that wanted to, it wasn't preferential, it was all logical, and it was laid out very well um by the city, and it was, it made some a chance on the um off of the chump stick. Um, it's the setback, and it was four feet taller than, but than the regulation. I think it was a very fair ask. Um, tomorrow, I'm gonna go to the designing board. I always like to go. I think they're always great to to go, not officially on, but as a citizen, I get, I get, we can go, anybody can go. Um, go to that, and then the the P A C meeting, I'm always interested in that. Be my first to kind of attend and see what what's going on there. Um, and don't forget roller skating started on Wednesdays at the Fest Hall. All right, I enjoy skates, side by sides, not in minds. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, just briefly, again, uh, last week I was at um Association of Washington Cities Boiling. Along with, they have uh annuals. City Action Days at the Legislature, so was over there, got the chance to meet um with all three of our. Representative and Senator Hawkins on various um topics around housing. Senator Hawkins is sponsoring another um request for mend for the purchase of those thirty-one. Um, uh, units that they've committed to, so um he's put in another request through the capital budget. Um, for housing for them. Uh, and then I'm going to go over tomorrow to also to testify on that Senate Bill fifty-three thirty-four that'll. Be the first real chance for us to get some significant dollars from, but. From that uh potential bill, like I said, without, you know, a funding stream. Um, we're just gonna have a tough time keeping our community, so. This is our first real opportunity. It's gone through the Senate. Uh, Senator Hawkins was one of only two. Republican senators that voted for it, but he said it was important for Leavenworth, and so he felt comfortable voting for it, so. Um, and uh, and now it's going through the House, so we'll see how that turns out, but um. I thought it's important enough that I'm gonna get up at four in the morning to go testify, so. Um, that's the end of my report. Bobby?
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Uh, next Thursday, I'll be having a kickoff meeting with the Department of Ecology and Environmental Consultant, A E G Atlas. Uh, for the integrated planning grant to conduct due diligence of the car wash property, so hope to get out there and start testing. Um, our right of entry runs into April at some point, and favorable conditions right now on the ground to start drilling and looking for contaminants. Um, management met with union representatives on Friday in our first ever labor management meeting. Uh, we discussed a compensation study, which Cavett Down Associates will be preparing before we begin union negotiations this summer. Uh, the kickoff meeting for the compensation study is Wednesday. It is anticipated to be completed by the end of June. Um, staff and I met with members of the United Methodist Church uh last week, this is the church on the corner of Summit. And Evans, the church had been charging the public to park twenty dollars, uh, per charging the public twenty dollars. To park in eight angled parking spaces in front of a church that are actually within the city's right of way. So that was brought to my attention when I started here. Um, we surveyed the property, determined that, yes, it is indeed the city's property, not the church's property. Started asking the church to stop charging. It took about a year for them to come into compliance, but they have stopped uh since stopped charging, but they wanted to meet with us to discuss. Us permitting them to uh. So we do permits for the schools to allow them to charge in our free lots. Here and at the pool during festivals. They wanted to see if we could do the same thing there. But these lots are different. These lots are private property. That's on, that's right of way, and if we gave them a permit to do it, was to stop. Anybody from asking, hey, I've got three spots in front of my house, why can't I charge and collect that value? So we're not allowing them to do that. Um, and uh, they did then ask about, well, could you just um? Did you have a surplus? Could you vacate the right of way? Ran that through community development and public works, and we're not in favor of doing that either, um, but we have. Allowed them to apply for a permit to do what the schools do, um, cuz they wanted to. Generate funds for the backpack program. Generate funds for the backpack program. Now granted, we do give them, we gave them five thousand dollars for the backpack program through the Levmore Fund last year. I anticipate that they would, or for this year, anticipate they'll ask for a lot more grant funds again, and we did give them another opportunity. You can. We can give you a permit for one of our lots, but not for the street. Um, and work is getting underway for the fatal flaws analysis for the Osborne project. A R C Architects will be at the site on Friday. And Envir- uh, Orion Environmental Services will be conducting hazardous materials testing next Tuesday, Wednesday. Right.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, first out of the gate, just let me know if there's any questions. I'm a January twenty-four report. January two thousand twenty-four, it's founder chapter thirteen packet. Couple items to update council on, I'll be brief. I just wanna uh, give a shout out to Chris Planky, our water plant supervisor. He passed his water distribution two exam. Uh, also shout out to Mark Fabiar, one of our water plant operators. He also passed his water distribution manager two exam. And Councilor Waters mentioned this already. Yeah, I wanted to second the shout out to the neighborhood playground committee for all the work on Osborne. We're getting very close. We have a draft survey put together that's gonna go out to Cascade School District. It's gonna uh, survey the students third through seventh grade on a few different options for the playground. Our intention is to. It's a continued refine those options, and then on the twenty-seventh, at the study session, give an update to the city council on where we're at on Osborne Playground. And my last update is I attended the Shlan- the Solid Waste Advisory Committee on January thirty-first. And I just wanted to update the council. So Shlan County has decided to close their yard waste site on East Leavenworth Road, Armadale.
Really? Oh. Okay, more reason for Witten to roll out our roadside pickup.
Yep.
Well, uh?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, I will be starting. Work with Shlan County on updating our hazard mitigation plan. Uh, we do a small update every year, but it's been enough years now that this will be a little bit larger update and it's regional. So all the cities and the county will be represented through that work. Um, on a work level, we have issued the building permit for the hotel. So that one is out the door. Um, and the apartment units and buildings are. Gonna be following suit here, so we'll see those start to roll out the door. Um. We did finish up some land use, as was mentioned. We had a very good public hearing. People participated and by providing comment. And then at the hearing itself, we didn't have any comment. Um, like it when people come and really glad they're. There, so it all adds to a better staff report. So when you have people reach out to you with concerns about what might be. Processing, whether it's a bed and breakfast or a variance or anything else. Um, please do encourage them to send their comments and or participate at the hearings. It's a, it's a. Important part of our process. We worked with uh, Cara this week to establish a. Co- public comment. Policy on social media, when and how people comment. And how to respond if they're just posting on Facebook with their comments and how to direct them to. Be a party of record rather than just posting on social media. So we're talking about those options. In perfect time because the adventure park will be going to hearing March twenty-nine. Nine AM. Uh, we will have that. At City Hall. It'll be an in-person option or a Zoom option, so people will have both options for that particular hearing item. That's my report.
Thank you. Chantel?
Thank you, Mayor Florrie. Council, uh, just a brief update from me. Uh, just shout out to my team, the finance staff, Beverly, Shirley, and Brandy. Uh, great successful completion of the closure of twenty twenty-three, as well as January being. Pretty much our busiest month of the year for us in finance, with also taking care of the federal requirements for reporting. That includes W twos and ten ninety-nines for the city, so all uh, taxes have been filed accordingly with the federal government. It was a challenging year. I will let you know as they changed the. Procedures for us internally on how we did those. And uh, us along with the entire country was under a new process. So it was a very challenging every day trying to submit. But we did complete them on January thirty-first at about eight o'clock at night. So we we met the deadlines without having to file for extensions. Uh, just a personal update. Many of you know I underwent surgery last Wednesday, which is why I'm not with you today. Uh, it went very well. There was rotator cuff tears, labrum tear in my shoulder. And upon getting into the shoulder, they found I also had a bicep tear. So all of it has been fixed and I'm in good shape and I'm on my road to recovery. I do uh, anticipate taking. It easy for the next week and probably getting back into the office a little bit next week. And I'll be seeing you hopefully in person at our next council meeting.
Thanks, Chantel.
All right. Um, we are ready to for our last, which is an executive session under R C W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, one, one. But litigation, I asked for a motion to recess. Into executive session for fifteen minutes under R W forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, twenty-one. But litigation with no action to be taken.
So moved.
Dick Boom, Sharon seconded. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Okay, we will be going into executive session. And no action will be taken afterwards. So. Eight fifty-six, so.
Move the date fifty-seven.
Okay, nine eleven. Okay.
There we go. We're out of executive session. We want to go back in for the same purpose for an additional ten minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. Uh, it's unanimous. We'll be back in for ten min- minutes and we'll give ourselves a minute. Give it in.
After this. You got a diagram, Delby?
Okay.
I'll take a look.
Okay, we're back in regular session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And it's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Let me see your hands. It's unanimous. Have a good night.
Have a good night. You can just make up whatever you want.